Some that are not present with us here, but are here by Zoom. We have our CEO Bruce Ferry, our CFO Dave Hirasawa, Davey Ratchford.
We can see Davey right there. You can see the shimmer off the side of his head.
And at some point, I wanted to turn it over to Bruce if he's able to speak. We just wanted to signal.
All right, so this is Commissioner Jim Harvey, right here.
Like the other two, I took the stairs from the basement. It just takes me a little longer than it looks like.
Go ahead.
I wanted to make sure there was oxygen still in the room when I came in.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Steve Emery, I'm just President Anthony.
Hey.
Scott Park, I'm the controller.
Very good. So we welcome you all here today. Hello.
There's not much oxygen left in the room, is there?
I sucked a lot of it out. Okay, let's see. Steph, you're the first one up there. Did you call this?
I did.
All right, go ahead. We'll turn time over to you.
Welcome, gentlemen, and those attending via Zoom. Today, we're going to be talking about Snow Basin's public infrastructure district. Before we begin, I want to let you guys know kind of where we're at in our newly created process. So Snow Basin, we've worked with them for several months. We've put together an economic development finance committee, which is composed of some of the members in this room, including Commissioner Froer. We've been meeting with Snow Basin on a regular, on a regular schedule for quite some time now as we're working through this new policy, as well as working through this new procedure. So I wanted to just give you guys an introduction of where we're at in the procedure and then turn the time over to Snow Basin for their presentation. In front of you, you've got a copy of the procedure. We are down to this, this section called initiating resolution. So we do have one step that we've skipped over, but that's because we put this process in a place in the middle of their process. So they're still working on their petition. Our attorney, Chris Crockett, has generously provided a template for them to work off of. He's working with Brett.
Just received it.
Yeah.
Turned it around immediately.
Yeah, so this is, this is more of a formality than anything. And so we're going to continue on with our process, which we're initiating resolution. So today, we're here for the Snow Basin team to do their presentation on their application. The Economic Development Finance Committee has reviewed this, and we feel that at this point in time, it's, it's a good opportunity for the commissioners to hear their presentation. And then we will deliberate with you afterwards at some period in the, in the very, very near future and see if you have any concerns or if you need additional information from our committee to be able to make a decision if you'd like to move forward with a initiating resolution. And that would give our team and Snow Basin's team the opportunity to create a governing document that would oversee the entire PID and, and what they're suggesting today in their proposal. So the governing documents, similar to, similar to bylaws, is probably the best thing that you could equate it to. And it gives, it gives Snow Basin, once their PID is created, it gives them a template to work off of. In that governing document, you're, today, you're going to see their proposal. Stages and phases of their proposal will be governed by that governing document. That means they'd have to meet certain criteria before they can move on to the next phase, or they would have to have a benchmark or a time commitment before they can move on to the next phase. So the governing document would have triggers and benchmarks in it. And that's something that we would work with their team and with your recommendation on how to put that together.
That's good, Steph.
So that's where we're at. So I'd like to turn the time over to Snow Basin and for their presentation. I believe you've got it up on, on the screen, and you also have a copy in front of you. Sorry.
Go ahead.
But before we dive into the details, first off, Chairman Harvey, Commissioner Jenkins.
This is sorry, this is the new chair.
Oh.
That's okay.
I missed at the bottom of the rung now.
That's just fine.
We appreciate your time and your consideration of this. We also have a few of our team members here by Zoom. And I wondered, I wondered if, if we could bring up, let either Dave or Bruce. Dave Hirasawa is our CFO, Bruce Ferry is our CEO. I wanted to let them just say hello if we have that, the way to do that.
Oh, thank you, Jim. I'm actually sitting in the same room as Bruce and Davey, so we're going to make sure that we work out our Zoom mechanics here. First off, thank you very much to the commission and to staff in the county for allowing us to make this presentation today. I feel it's not an exaggeration to say this is a really momentous step for our company, and we very, very much appreciate the consideration and the time that's been provided from Weber County in further into this proposal. And our hope and expectations, I think, will find this to be compelling and a true win-win as it relates to what can be developed at Snow Basin and the positive impacts that will result to Weber County. And without me looking forward to making our presentation. Bruce, any further comments?
Yeah, to go along with what, what Dave said. Hold on a second. As Dave said, you know, thank you very much for the time you have put into this so far. And, and my thanks to, to my group that we, we've put a lot of time into this. It's a, it's probably the most important project that we have going on in our company right now. And the one thing that I would like to say is that, you know, we have, you know, multiple properties and we deal with multiple commissioners and, in different counties and in different states. But I have to tell you, hands down, you guys have been wonderful to work with. You've helped direct us and lead us in the right way. You've been great in communicating back to us. And we just, on behalf of the holding family, we really appreciate just, just how well and transparent you have been through this process. So thank you very much.
Don't give us too much credit, Bruce. We have a lot of citizenry up there that says we've been too nice to you. We've been under a little pressure lately, and, you know, we're just trying to be fair across the board. But some think we've been too fair. So anyway, we appreciate that, though. Thank you.
Also, just before we dive into the financing request, I wanted to give you a little just update on the project. We're moving ahead with both, Bill, Five Ashes with East West Partners. So they've ramped up over the last few months. They've got four people now working on this full-time. They're helping us with the infrastructure planning.
Is this with Club Med?
No, Bill is with East West Partners.
What part of the project, is he on the whole project?
On, on both the whole project and then likely doing some vertical development in addition to what we're.
All right. We're just trying to keep it all straight. You've got some really balls in there right now. It's hard for us to see which one you got going.
We've got a bunch of them going.
You do have a lot going.
So we have this, we're progressing well with, with Club Med. They've been doing designs of massing of the buildings and how it would, you know, layout. We're kind of still working through that with them, but they're very actively proposing stuff. We'll have them up, up on site on Friday this week. So that's progressing well. And then we're refining, you know, the infrastructure stuff. We're moving forward with annexation into the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District. We'll be drilling some wells, starting in the next couple of weeks, exploratory wells and so forth. So there's a lot of, a lot of very, you know, positive momentum and good things happening, so. And, and we think overall, this is a pretty cool opportunity to do something that can really be a good win-win. So anyway, we appreciate your time and the consideration. We're going to have Jason be kind of our lead singer here and Sam.
Whoa.
Running the deck, so without further ado.
Go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners. I don't know that I'm that good of a singer. I'm going to do my best, but I did want to, just at the first of this, might be helpful to maybe turn that off so that we can just see the deck. Sorry about that. Well, commissioners, thank you. And I will also wanted to express our appreciation to Stephanie and John, Chris, Scott, others that have really been very helpful in this process. You know, they're going through a public infrastructure district for the first time as well. These are a new concept and tool in the state of Utah. They've been used, you know, across the United States and in the intermountain west. But in Utah, this is relatively a new financing tool. And they've been great to kind of work through the, the questions and some of the concerns that I think have, have come from the commissioners as well. And so today's effort really is to approach this as a request and, and a dialogue with you as the county commissioners to, to determine where we go from here. And I think it's been well outlined of the initiating resolution that hopefully would be the considered, you know, next action step and then moving forward to a governing document. So today, we're really talking about this Snow Basin development project. My background, maybe directly investment banking, financial advisory work. And that includes tax increment financing and local government finance. And we've been involved in, in many of these projects now that have started to come to fruition and have successfully been put forward. We refer to this as a unified plan of finance in order to really deliver the intended and expected return, if you will, of this economic asset. There are significant public finance tools that we would be requesting for the county's consideration. One of those being public infrastructure districts and the other tax increment financing through the community reinvestment area. And you're the governing direction for any of those to proceed. The next slide, maybe just a quick overview of what we want to hit on today. We want to go specifically through the request as it's been helped to, to be shaped by your staff and others. Provide a little bit of a project development update as it relates to Area A. There are multiple areas that Snow Basin controls, but the specific development area, which, what we're talking about today is Area A, you know, 300, 400 somewhat acres of property closely situated by the existing improvements and development. And then the last kind of Q and A, if you will, is this idea of public financing tools and give you an opportunity to maybe ask more questions if you have relative to public infrastructure districts or tax increment. So let's flip through the next one. We certainly appreciated this model. We've enhanced it a little bit from what you've got. I don't know if it's enhanced. We've put it in a landscape mode as opposed to portrait mode. But it was very helpful for us to see kind of the logic of what the steps of the county were in terms of considering this. And Stephanie's already outlined really this idea of, of the initiating resolution being kind of the next step. I wanted to maybe specifically just go the three or four bullet points of, you know, first of all, it is the intent to request the county commission's consideration for initiating resolution, which would authorize the governing document to be explored, drafted, developed, and negotiated. We are contemplating three PIDs. Initially, we have, you know, four or potentially even more public infrastructure districts in order to phase projects to meet the timing of the market. As we deliberated, as we received feedback, we recognized that, that this, the phasing was a good thought, but if we phased it too much, that it, it might create some concern. So we went back and evaluated in terms of what is absolutely has to be done before you can turn any light on or, you know, rent any space or anything like that to what needs to be done in the first 10 years. And then after that, what's the completion phase, kind of after that 10 years? And so we've looked at it from that perspective of three PIDs. The proposed project, if developed, I think is important, I, I think for residents, citizens, all of us, is that the magnitude of this is, is quite different than what it is even now. We're talking about more than $2 billion of additional private capital that would be invested into just Area A and about 2.1 million of new taxable value in terms of property tax. There's also significant new tax revenues that would be generated through transient room tax, restaurant tax, other tourism taxes, sales taxes, and fees, of course, related to the development. The encapsulation of our plan really is that growth pays for itself. We're not asking for, that's the difference with this particular vehicle is this tool doesn't extend obligation beyond the PID itself or the TIF. It's all kind of post-performance driven, meaning that if the $2 billion of assets aren't invested, developed, it's not on the tax rolls, then it doesn't generate any incremental revenue that then could be used. And so really, this is intended to be growth paying for growth within the concept of this public finance plan. If we go to the next slide, I think this might further kind of expand the vision of, of the costs. And, and again, I would, I would indicate that these are our preliminary estimates. I'm sure the county probably appreciates capital projects that you might be considering as well and, and the difficulties with construction inflation and costs and trying to narrow in on really these estimated costs at this point. But we've got a packet in front of you as well, but if you have a hard time reading that, I would reference you to that. But the idea here is the concept of a PID and a TIF. So the PID is a, is a independent, well, it's created by the creating entity, but then it becomes an independent, basically, local district. Its only purpose is to finance public infrastructure. So it's, it's different than a special assessment area. It's different than a local improvement district or a special service district. But the PID would be the vehicle to actually approach the capital markets. So it would be tax-exempt ones that we'd be proposing. We have a one and a two, just to kind of delineate between certain improvements would be more PID-developed and generated. Some would be TIF because of the way the statute is written. There's more private amenities, still providing public benefit, but not necessarily owned by the public. So we've estimated, you know, almost 200, and this is in future value terms, $220 million of infrastructure in the categories of water and sewer, electric, a fire station that we've anticipated would need to be constructed up there and provided for the benefit of that area. Electric substation also would, would it be expanded so it would serve all of this area? And then there's a number of amenities, recreation. And then you'll notice the last line item is what I referred to earlier, this completion phase improvements. Those are really the same types, which are water, sewer, but less defined at this point. But nevertheless, needed water and sewer for that completion phase. And so we're proposing to break up the PID so that the PID would be spread into three different PIDs over the time length. And each PID would be separated into a parcel, into parcels. So no PIDs would overlap. There wouldn't be a PID that would overlap, but each of them would have a.
And they would all be on different portions of.
Different portions, yeah, that's a good way to say it, Commissioner, is it wouldn't.
So they not only wouldn't overlap financially, they wouldn't overlap physically?
Physically, yep. Geographically, they would be independent of themselves. And, but importantly is they would all have the same tax rate. The idea here, the vision here is not one PID wouldn't carry a bigger burden than this other PID that's right next to it. They would all collectively share the same 0.4% is what we're proposing. That 0.4% would be in addition to the 1% that would be currently levied, which would be the county, the school district, and the other special districts. So it is an increase in overall taxes, but only to those designated PID areas. The, the TIF similarly would be phased and similarly would, would just be components within that. So they wouldn't overlap either. They wouldn't overlap geographically nor financially. They would mirror, however, pretty closely mirror PID one, PID two, and PID three.
But no overlap.
But no overlap, yeah. And so that's the vision. Now, I think if we go to the next slide, hopefully that's clear. This first PID, so PID number one, what we've contemplated here is what we refer to as upfront infrastructure or first PELLO. First PELLO term, as I've come to know it just a little better, is the idea of this is going to be heavy lodging, overnight lodging experiences that, you know, create a resort and create lodging, dining, restaurants, et cetera, all those types of things. PID one, however, would be what we were asked to look at is what's the essential infrastructure just to be able to basically rent out one room? Well, of course, we've got a lot of upfront infrastructure. You can't very well financially manage infrastructure and increments that aren't significant enough, economically not significant. So this would be to basically provide the benefit to 474 condominium units. So that would be the Phase One, if you will. That's the estimated number of units. In addition to that, 41,000 square feet of commercial, probably mostly restaurant-oriented space. And then the significance of the, the hotel is the 426 hotel rooms we've been referring to as Club, Club Med, the, the kind of the initial flagship resort hotel. In order to accommodate this, here are the improvements. So this would be the proposed PID one, and it would estimate about $27-ish million of equity. So that Snow Basin would invest the $27 million. They're already currently in the mode of investing and developing water resources up there, drilling, if you will, wells to determine what additional capacity and resources are there. And then the PID and the TIF combination would provide $56 or $57 million. So the idea again will be this 84 million of Phase One infrastructure would be funded with a combination of PID, TIF, and equity. The PID and the TIF, though, would work complementary. They wouldn't be two different tranches. They would be the same tranche, and the PID would just be the leverage mechanism to finance it. That makes sense? So the TIF revenue, by virtue of that, would come to the PID. The PID would pledge all of the TIF revenue and the PID revenue to monetize the $56 million, $57 million.
And that's, that's a common, that's a common way of doing that. It's completely acceptable in the state statute for the TIF funding to pay off, to pay, go towards the bond process.
Yeah, and a much, much more efficient way to approach it because of the limited tax nature, adware and tax nature that PIDs would have. But the governing document is what would set the stage for what, what can the PID rate be? What can it be used for? That's the next step that we'd want to go to and, and discuss with the county is what those levels are. The next slide is, is the PID two. So this is the second phase. So this is what would be needed in addition to those, again, 474 condos, condo units, 426 hotel beds, and the 41,000 square feet. In order to provide capacity for the next tranche, which we envision is within that 10-year, first 10 years, it's another 90 estimated right now based on construction cost, $94, $95 million. And similarly, we'd use equity, you know, Snow Basin would infuse equity into it. There would also be the PID and the TIF revenues that would come from the growth. And they would contribute to that, and, and we would use it for, again, the water, the sewer, the roads, transportation, ski and mountainside improvements, village amenities, recreation. The idea is really to create this sense of place up there with these tools. So that would be the first 10 years. And then the last, PID number three, is our completion phase. And it would, as I mentioned before, it, it shares its own distinct geographic and also financial. So what we would envision would be accommodated by Phase Three would be another 370 condo units, 30,000 square feet of commercial. And that would be the completion phase, and it would need additional water, sewer, roads, not as specifically defined at this point from the cost perspective, but certainly know that those are the elements that would need to be financed as part of this. So those are the, that's the concept, again, of the plan is, is three PIDs. And I didn't mention, but associated with that would be three TIFs. It would be one general area, but each TIF would have its own geographic and its own, own financial parameters spread out. I think one good question that was asked as part of our due diligence and really the county's direction was these public infrastructure improvements can be financed. We recognize and their state law can be financed with the PID and the TIF. But who's going to operate it? Who's going to manage it? You know, is this, what's the plan for that? So our chart that we've put up here, I hope, provides a little more clarification in terms of we're not requesting any county general funds or any of your departments or anything to be responsible or have the need to provide ongoing administrative costs or, or operation and maintenance. So the water particularly, and our council is here today, Brent Rose, who I think you know, we're in the process of creating the Trappers Loop Water Improvement District. So that would be a, a local district. It would have its own authority related to fees and taxes, et cetera, for the ongoing sustenance of water system.
It is the independent, separate, totally separate governmental and.
And then the same with the sewer. We're, there is a significant memorandum of understanding that's been entered into with the Mountain Green Special Service District to extend the sewer collection down to their, you know, quite some ways, actually, down to their facility. And then we would be operating under a user. We would be a user of their system, and they, we'd be subject to charges and fees and, and so forth.
I might add that we're in the process of just getting the draft of annexation and development agreement to move into that district. We have, as you mentioned, the memorandum of understanding went out. The stage will develop that into a formal agreement and then move forward with the annexation.
Well, this Mountain Green sewer would be available to others in the area.
Yes.
It already serves Mountain Green.
Yeah, I know that. I just, I haven't have talked to a property owner that's south of you the other day, and I know they have interest in this.
Yeah, I think the idea would be to build capacity in the facility to collect and then open the overall area. It wouldn't just serve only this area because we'd be part of, of the regionalization of this improvement. And I think there's pros, well, there's certainly benefits to Snow Basin because there are future connections that could probably connect to that system. Certainly a benefit to Mountain Green because the financing mechanism to get this extension would be on the backs of the developer. And so it, it was kind of a, a good tool or a good plan for how they can expand that. Roads, community parking, we are contemplating some potentially parking structures that would provide the ability for us to, you know, utilize the facility in a good way up there. We envision Wheeler Basin, which is also in the process of being created, the Wheeler Basin District, which would be the governance for roads, community, parking, recreation, stormwater, some of those other improvements that don't consist of water or sewer, et cetera. Of course, Rocky Mountain Power is the main service provider here related to electric. So the electric substation and facilities and extension of lines, distribution, et cetera, obviously would be financed through this vehicle, but then turned over to Rocky Mountain Power to maintain it, operate it, and we would become part of their service, you know, system, their area. Century Link on the communication side, natural gas, obviously Dominion Energy. So the last three are pretty common for any development area that I think would be in your, well, in unincorporated county areas where there's those types of services. So that would be, what would be envisioned is the PID would finance. The assets themselves would then be owned, if you will, by the PID, but obviously could easily be transferred to, to each one of these, you know, these entities. So that would be the, the vision.
And that would be included in the governing document.
Yes, that would be. The, we don't need to take a lot of time because I know you've seen all this. So I just wanted to illustrate that there is a much broader master plan. The vision of the multitude of this is not just area A, but area A is the finance plan that we've just reviewed. There's other areas that we believe will add significant benefit. And just wanted to be clear that that's not part of the finance plan. We're not asking for Pids. If necessarily for those other areas, but wanted to show, show it in the context of. You know, the significance of the other development that would be anticipated and occurring. And some of those other areas are distal enough that, you know, infrastructure might also be. A difficult, you know, component to those as well, but a future discussion point. Just to kind of recap area A because we had the three phases in total. This is just consistent with what has been approved. So thirteen hundred and seventy-nine condo units. Hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet of commercial. And five hundred and ninety-nine hotel rooms. That's probably split between three or four. Hotels specifically with Club Med being, you know, in the first phase and then. The other on the second phase. So that's the, that's the, that's what constitutes this two billion dollars. So this is the development that would be the two billion dollars in tax base. The next slide, I think, is the total area boundaries. This is what we. We've envisioned as an area A and also would be the annexation area for the pit. What we did do is went back and you can see very small poster stamp sized. Yes, right there, then one up at the right corner and one over in the left. Yes. So those are intended to be, since we don't know at this point in time, what all properties would be in one. What all properties would be in two or three. These are just legal description, basically a thousand square feet. To show that each one of those would go into the red area and would annex. As part of the Pid process, certain parcels, and none of them again would overlap. So the postage stamp would be expanded. But it would be a certain subset of the red area. The next Pid. Which is kind of delineated in a, in a different region of the red. Would incorporate another portion of the overall geographic area and then the same thing with the third area. So the idea would be the full red area would be consumed by one of the three. So some have asked, well, why the postage stamp? Why do you not do it right up front? Well, the reason is we don't know exactly where all the units are going to be. We know. Pretty well where we think some of the hotels might be, but we don't necessarily know where all four hundred might be at that point. And so. Providing some flexibility to have kind of the postage stamps and then they expand from there. But. The commitment of a governing document would be obviously that no overlap. Again. Tax rate wouldn't be different and have to be the same across all properties and no overlap of the Pid. Pid one, Pid two, or Pid three. And then I think you've seen this village concept plan before. This was introduced by Snow Basin back in September. And they made their announcement. Just more of an aerial depiction of, of where some of these improvements would be. You've got. Kind of up in the upper right corner is the, that hotel I consider the. The larger hotel, the four hundred and twenty some odd units. And then there's a couple of hotel units that would be kind of towards the base of where Earl's Lodge is now. And then there would be improvements all over the mountainside, including the roadways, transportation, parking.
This is also the, the same image that y'all approved in the development agreement amendment that we did. So, so, sa- same plan, same image of the state.
So maybe just in summary then, commissioners, what, what are our goals and objectives? And we, we believe they align very well with what we've heard from the, from the county and county staff and officials. And I'm just going to reiterate a few of these things. We want to establish a tax rate, a mill rate. That's applicable to the entire development. We don't want one pit to have certain burden and not be shared. Although they'll be for different improvements. The idea is uniformity. Make sure that it's fairly burdened across all of it. We also want to ensure that the cost of infrastructure is shared by those benefiting from it. We've, you know, in other. Locations that we've done this, there have been other tools that have been deployed in the past that have. Somewhat tried to do this, but still have a little bit of the county's moral obligation or. Their backstop involved, whereas a public infrastructure district completely removes it from that concept. And so. Really, this, this is only benefiting or is paid for by only those that directly benefit or use. The components of the infrastructure and, and the benefit that they come as patrons to the facility. One thing is to just advance some of the public infrastructure upfront. One of the. Significant barriers to a master developed plan like this is the upfront infrastructure. Very costly on the, on the front end, requires a lot of lift, if you will, in terms of equity before any return. That's a difficult proposition, obviously, in the private markets. But this tool allows for those that are going to benefit from these infrastructure improvements, you know, to pay for it. The tax increment's also an important component here because there are certain components in this overall plan. That the public infrastructure district tax is not permitted to provide. Certain. Public amenities, public service oriented components, but not owned by the public. And so those. The electric is a good example. We need electric, but it's a Rocky Mountain Power owned facility and technically it can't. You know, use the tax rate per se to, to finance that. So tax increment. Is the mechanism that allows for that to be paid, paid for and then dedicated, you know, to the project. There's also a motivation, I think, for certain commercial areas that we believe are kind of exponential. We, we know that transient room tax, tourism taxes are pretty. Well-defined in statute of how you have to use them. You can't just, we know you can't just use them for general fun, but. We do know that it adds significantly to some of the things that you can accomplish within the county parks and recreation and. Other things. And we think this is a significant opportunity for those to be expanded. By virtue of the development that's going in, it will generate a significant amount of multiplier. Effects on those specific types of revenues. And the last one, I think we've already mentioned was just it enables funds. To be spent on improvements that can't be funded by the pit. So there are a few of those in our. In our description that need both in order to effectively do this. We've had some good dialogue. That the school district. Likes the possibility of the TIF. We've had initial conversations with them or. A few initial conversations with them where they have been introduced the idea of the phasing concept. They also know that we're pursuing a public infrastructure district as, as part of the overall financing tool. They like that because they felt like the TIF, a lot of times when they pursue TIF. When they're asked to, there isn't a lot of times, it's not an upfront funding. You know, sometimes it's just the developer has to install it. And then it comes back. They like the idea that there is a vehicle that installed that. You know, upfront as opposed to providing the tool and then maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't.
Kind of where you guys are going with the terms of the TIF.
Yes, we're, we're talking right now based on policies. We've, we've had several of the entities provide us with some policies and direction. So we're trying to fit that all into that. So right now we're, we're contemplating fifty percent of only the adware and property tax. So none of the other taxes that will be generated, just the incremental property tax, fifty percent for fifteen years. And it's, it's consistent with most of the policies. The school district. Has set a policy more around the twelve years, but they've been willing for this particular magnitude of a pro- project to consider even fifteen. On this particular one. And so we're hopeful that that's what we would be able to generate here. So fifty percent, fifteen years, I think is a, maybe as a contrast, I, I believe the summit project was. You know, kind of phased. It was like ten years at a certain level and then, you know, another level after that. We're looking to just do it for the fifty percent fifteen years and keep it simple.
You got a cap on that?
And we would be putting a cap on it. Yeah.
You don't have the cap number now?
I don't think so. We probably need some more exploration through the governing document of the Pid, just to. You know, make sure we know what the Pid generates and then back into the cap of the, of the TIF in there. The last couple of slides won't take much time, but if there are questions, you know, there are some real qualitative. Benefits, the destination mountain resort. Again, reiterate growth pays for growth. It accelerates the development significantly with this public finance tool upfront. It's off balance sheet, which is an important distinction from other projects that it won't be a component unit of the, of the county. That's different than a special assessment area is. So this would not be a component. It would not be debt. Either constitutionally or statutorily for the county. That's the unique aspect of the Pid that hasn't existed before. And then the other benefits, we have modeled, but I, we haven't gone into a lot of detail, but. Transit room tax, again, restaurant taxes, sales taxes, some of the other county benefits are, are, are significant. And. Can't be used for anything, but they can be used for certain quality of life measures and other things that I think really do benefit the county. The quantitative benefits, we talked about, but again, just to summarize. Just area A alone, over two billion, two point one billion dollars of estimated tax base that would be billed. That translates into two hundred and sixty-eight million dollars of property tax for that defined period of time. A portion of it, we would be sharing. The, the idea would be the CRA would share that for a period of time. And then once that sun sets or hits the cap, so either or, the lesser of either the fifteen years or. We've reached the cap amount, that would stop and then a hundred percent flows through to the county, school district and other taxing entities. And so really our hope today was to be able to have this dialogue and discussion, see if there were questions that. That the commissioners might have and. And then respectfully request that you consider moving forward with the Pid. As, as has been outlined. So with that, Jim, I'll turn it back maybe to you if you had any. Things you.
No, that's, that's a lot to absorb and digest. Appreciate, again, the staff time and your time and we're. I think we're open for your, your questions and feedback and whatever dialogue we might want to have.
Okay, what you lead out here?
Yeah, be happy to. Well, first thing, I just want to. Give kudos to Jim, your team. I think, actually, I became involved with this about two years ago. We paid a little visit to you and Davey up inside that plan. And you've required some patience to get to this point we are today. But I, my opinion, I think we're at a good point. And. My view as a lifelong Snow Basin user as well as a lifelong Augen Valley, I think this. Obviously brings some benefits to the community up there. Now, one, one question I did, I think is important to note, is that of your. Approximately fourteen hundred condominium units and your commercial square footage. How much do you see yourself as owning? How much do you see yourself? Because if you'll notice, there was no single family homes up there. And I know from working with the holdings in the past number of years on and off, you know, they like to hold real estate, which. Actually, you know, I've come to appreciate that. But how much do you see yourself, when I see yourself hold Snow Basin owning. Versus selling out? Because that will make a difference on the, you know, basically who pays the PID and how that translates through. And it's going to make a difference on the TRT. So do you have, do you have kind of a breakdown as far as how much? You see Snow Basin owning versus fee simple ownership to somebody else?
I would think the large majority would be owned by others that would be doing land sales, like what we're envisioning doing with Club Med. Where we'll sell land. We would plan to sell land at East West for them to do vertical product.
Sell or lease?
Probably sell, although, you know, you don't, le- lease can get complicated.
Sorry to interrupt, but yeah, there's, that's a common practice nowadays as far as when people build that infrastructure, you know?
We, we, I don't see a lot of like lease. In the ski and ski out kind of space in the resort. I think, I think there'd be one specific area where we'd end up probably holding and owning, and that would be the commercial space. So the ground floor, because we, we want to be able to control the experience of somebody coming into the resort. And that really happens on the ground floor. So I would anticipate Snow Basin probably owning. Most or all of the commercial space. And then.
Leasing that out.
Yeah, and then leasing it out.
So you basically all, you, you own the real, you own the commercial space. And then, you know, but you, you plan on going vertical with that commercial space?
I would think, I would think we might do a bit of vertical ourselves that we would own. I mean, we're in the lodging business and we're pretty good at it. And I would think we might have at some point like. I don't know, a Grand America, Snow Basin or the Snow Basin Lodge, or who knows what, but something that we would maybe own. But I would think the majority of it again would, would be, would be sold and would be, and, and lots of different product types. So there might be a traditional hotel, it might be condominium hotel. Condominiums, it might be fractional, a little time share. We want it to be active. And so that would be our underlying thing is the more different ways you can kind of. Sell the experience, you know, from a condominium with a kitchen in it, to a more traditional hotel room. To somebody who's coming for a week in fractional to the Club Med. That variety of different ways of. People experiencing it lets us really activate the source.
So you see yourself more as parceling it off into pads, different segments to let them go vertical, sell that off to different investment.
Which is a classic kind of master developer role.
I just didn't know, I want to know whether you guys are planning on kind of doing it all vertical or what percent you want to control. Other than that, that's something I got, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Harvey, that was the big part. So the, the commercial piece. And I, it's fascinating to me to watch this process and what you're actually going to sell with sale. As it relates to real estate or ground or property. But you're going to lease, not just tenant lease, but the lease that the other piece of that. I'll be watching through that. I know a big gauge for me when we enter into partnerships, especially like Pid, is I watch people. Do they do what they say they're going to do when they say they're going to do it? Since the introduction of what you said Commissioner for nearly two years ago when you brought us up there and. Showed us there, you've been on track there. I. I've been able to trust what you say a little more. I'm, I'm really happy Stephanie, you're here working on this and of course. Scott Park and Chris Croft are actually here. Sorry, you and your team back there. So we, we feel really good about the existing team that we have in Weaver County. We trust our people. So, so. Really, for me, a lot of it will come from not just you, but the information we get from our people. They're, we're surrounded by a lot of. Really talented people and we allow them to make decisions and, and, and so. Well, I'm just, I wanted to just be out loud, Mr. Chair, to say to our stuff, we're really going to trust you a lot here. Let us say to our staff, we're really gonna trust you a lot here. I, in in your decisions and make sure that you push back, especially with us, and and give us the opportunities to grow and learn through this. This is a big deal, so thank you, Jim. So uh Steph, uh, next move here is create this governing document. Now be you and our financial team, you'll get together and do that.
So, yeah, what what we want to do is just kind of have a a follow up with commissioners, the committee. And get your, get your questions answered if you need to get more information from Jim's team, or if we feel comfortable moving on to that next phase, which would be that you would get them on the agenda and you do an initiating resolution. And that would give us the uh ability to start negotiating that governing document.
Well, I'm of the opinion, I'm, John?
Might I ask one more question just for clarification for you? You've discussed three PID's. Probably, I think, what you're discussing now is do you put all those into the same governing document, question one and two? How would you envision, so the commissioners have a good uh expectation as to how those would play out over time? As far as PID one, PID two and PID three, and the timeline that each would then have individually? Would you mind, we're getting to that just for a second?
Sure, go ahead.
Maybe I'll, maybe I could take the second question first and then the first question and then turn it over to the experts. I I guess, the way I I think about this is, one of the kind of key lessons of being a real estate developer and especially a master developer at like this community level is is that phasing is absolutely critical. It's kind of like life or death. If you don't phase it well and you get too far out over your skis, you can have a wipeout. And that's one of the the lessons learned. And we're, we have a lot at stake here. You do also, we we own this, you know, a large amount of land, we own the resort, we've had it for decades. And we're very much intending to succeed with this. And so, critical to that is phasing well, pre-selling. So like, selling, selling the land to the Club Med, for example, you know, waiting till we get to that stage before we trigger the infrastructure. So so we want to be pre-selling and phasing as we go. Those are the two, the two fundamental keys to success here, you know, lessons learned. Market cycles happen, right? You have the O eight wipeout, you have all kinds of things that we have no idea. Um, but that's why we're asking for the flexibility of having the these multiple phases. Um, candidly, more phases would be better. But but we feel like three phases is probably enough, you know, to to do this and and to do it well. In terms of how long that takes, we don't know. Um, we've, we've modeled this based on about a twenty year, twenty to kind of thirty year build out. If if we look at um the experience, say, of Park City or some some of the other ski resorts, it's not, it's not as uh linear as, say, like primary housing or everybody need needs a primary home. Nobody needs a second home or resort stuff. And so when the cycles go, it can go lights out, you know, for a period of time and then recover. And and many of us have lived through these kind of cycles. Um, it's also the kind of thing where, you know, you you're into a pretty high price point where, again, it's discretionary. And and so we're not, I wouldn't anticipate like in a primary home community where you'd be selling like hundreds and hundreds of homes per year. This is, this is more like dozens of units, you know, per year, maybe a hundred, but a hundred would probably be a good year. And so, so I I don't know if that answers your question.
Try to marry the two thoughts of their ten year, I think they have in their minds. What you anticipate happening in that first ten years and what that might look based on the three. So, well, I'm trying to marry your your concept of ten years.
Right, so to that, John, the PID's, and that's the, that's what we really worry about here. I anticipate that that, they also would be phased one, two and three. And we would do them one at a time and operate them independently. And the same thing that you're talking about is you cycle and go into these. We'll get to a point where we'll have the second one available, eventually have the third one available, come on.
Right, hold on, just I I, then I'm gonna misunderstanding, thank you. You said one at a time, but you could run them if things are really good concurrently. You could run one and then in five or six years, start the next one and then a couple of years later, run, run the next one. So there's, all three of them are running concurrently in year eight, nine and then ten.
In the very well.
Not overlapping.
No, they wouldn't overlap.
That's the point.
But 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 to your point, uh, Commissioner Harvey, they could be, since since they're envisioned to run for probably thirty years, typically it'd be like a thirty year bond, like a thirty year mortgage, if you will. We would anticipate, you know, one one would still be paying taxes while the second one comes in.
I get it.
That makes sense.
No, that's correct.
Pardon?
Did that help a little bit?
Yeah, thank you, John. Any other questions, John? Steph, any other questions in the room?
Did we answer your question, Chris, on the postage stamp?
And a lot of the work going forward, the commission sets of orders is going to be working closely with our financial advisors and bond counsel to draft that governing document, proper breathing of flexibility.
And still protect the county.
Right.
So Charlie, from planning, I gotta believe yours got something in that ready here.
I've got lots of things that are rolling out that nobody wants to hear.
All right, so you two over there in the corner, you, your thumbs up. Right, all right, gentlemen, this is a wonderful uh presentation you made to us today. Uh, I'm, Davey, this whole time you haven't said a thing. Why you, do you want to say something, even if it's just waiting?
Probably best I don't say anything in this meeting. No, I I appreciate everybody's support too. It's been great to work with you on this and have you up at the resort and uh communicate effectively on what's going on, but the team in the room obviously have this story. And I'm here in the future if you want to come on up and ask more questions.
Looks like you're getting ready to close down up there.
Yeah, this Sunday, come get your days in.
Yeah, we'll be there. Me and Gage have been up there.
Yep. I think I saw Gage do the pond skim, is that right, Gage? You did the pond skim?
I was one with the, yeah, outfit on.
There you go, Gage.
I I didn't watch it for about fifteen minutes, so I was like, okay, way too, way too much for me. I'm an old guy, David, you know that. I'm an old timer. We didn't used to do that in nineteen sixty.
Yeah, we used to jump into the pond with your skis on.
We jumped into the pond, yeah, it was a little different. Mr. Chair, I think uh the process moving forward, I'd like to, since, you know, and I've, I've been involved with this discussion.
Right from the beginning.
From the beginning and especially with this team, I would like to have an opportunity to meet with our team uh at some point in the very near future and then make sure that we're comfortable moving ahead. I mean, I think that this presentation was great. I think it uh, we we've refined this from where we started three or four or five months ago to a point where I'm comfortable saying now, but I think there might be some questions that we want to hear from the remaining. And and I agree with Commissioner Harvey. I want to give uh just as many kudos to our team, Stephanie, and that team that's been, they've had the full charge in working with Jim Hill and his group, so.
So Steph, you'll line the next meeting up? And that's, the purpose of that is our governing document, the resolution to get it going. All right, gentlemen, so Steph, we'll we'll leave the time in there to you, hopefully in the next week. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it all.
Thanks for your help, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna take a five minute break there.
All right, good man. I think that's all we're saying.
All right, okay, gentlemen, good luck. Take some candy with you.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it very much.
Your routine is always.
Same, thank you.
It's gonna work out. It's all gonna be just fine.
Now, Harv, you see this little box of goodies over there?
No, huh, yeah, okay, fine.
You know, how'd you close that sale?
I don't know.
It's so good to have you. Yeah, it's just great.
All right, great.
Well, that's right. For all rochey or whatever. I've got a daughter in law. Well, I saw your family now. Will be my son. And her good friend in the road was all quite a new yorker. Someone that got in with that son, it's not a real serious. I mean, he'll, he'll trade maybe, he might, he might drive. He ran two years ago, quite again this year. He's only one that got in again two years ago.
Five minutes.
Yeah, this is way finding.
This is hard.
Well, it's about crockin' time. Charlie, holy man. All right, Scott Perks, this is you, bud.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as you know, we're working on wayfinding and signage. Last season, we installed the first phase of bike and pedestrian signs uh around the perimeter of the reservoir.
Do you have some pictures of those we can show?
Uh, yeah, I can.
Can you share your screen or get on or?
If you look in the packet I gave you, there's a, there's an exhibit.
Did you give us? This one? Got about seventeen packs.
Yeah, we packed.
I think there are the two, that one, you have an exhibit on that one.
So we got three or two?
This is wonderful.
Two, and there's three of us.
No, no.
Oh, we got one, there's, there's your copy. Each, each of the three of us have. There's your copy, there you go.
So this one that says the contract documents, First Amendment.
Yep.
And the back of that, there's an exhibit that shows these these signs.
Yeah, we see them.
So what we've installed so far is the first phase of bike and pedestrian signs that go around the uh the reservoir and then through one small town. So anybody who wants to go around the Pineview, we can do so with wayfinding and signage.
Wow, so let me tell you, Scott, you know, as a committee, we were going nowhere, remember that? Uh, we met, we met two or three times, it cost too much, we tried to cut it down, people didn't like it. Finally, everybody threw their hands in there and said, figure it out.
We went out to bid three different times, finally on the third time, got something.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
So expensive.
For being consistent.
Still very expensive.
Yeah, but.
But we were able to kind of, we were able to pull the the design intent down a little bit. We didn't cover the back, so there's not a full core ten back on these signs. You'll still be able to see the uh the Z bar framework like you do on all the other signs.
Yeah, we don't care.
But we did get it painted the same color, so at least it'll be attractive.
Well, you've got Joe helping you install them.
Joe's installing all the ones on the county.
This is good. So this is good, this is how you work together. I'm very proud of what you've done there.
So what we're doing is this season, when the weather comes around, we're gonna put in the first phase of vehicular signs. So those will be the larger ones that are in both the county and UDOT right of way. They follow the same design intent. It'll kind of tie together what we've already installed.
That sounds right there.
The green one?
Uh, all those.
Blue one?
There's a couple of green ones in there as well. The majority of them are the blue ones.
I'd like to know, as soon as the first one is in, when you get it all in, you tip it up and it's ready to take, I'd like to know when that is.
Yeah, I can let you know.
Preferably in advance. Okay, Scott, I mean, you know, I mean.
We'll, we'll tell you which day they're coming.
You want to go up there the day they tip him in the hole?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to cut a ribbon?
So do you want me to get Joe to let us know? Cause Joe's, one's gonna dig the hole and tip him in.
Almost, listen, this is five, five years for me on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's insane, do you want to do a little?
The ones along the UDOT right of way are probably gonna be installed first and they're gonna be installed by a contractor.
That's fine, as soon as that's done, I want to know. I just, so I want to come up.
We put Harvey, we can tie him to the signs and when they put it, it goes down. Oh, I guess, it might be a little. I didn't mean it like that. I didn't mean it quite that well. Okay, keep going.
So what we're doing is we're making a couple of minor amendments to this first phase of vehicular. Over the last year, when we put in the first phase of bike pad, we found a couple of areas where we'd like to bolster that a little bit. Or installing a couple more bike pad signs, but then as part of this uh First Amendment to the agreement with Graphic House is is the contractor, manufacturer, and the contractors installing a lot of these signs. We're adjusting the the list of signs, we're taking a few out, adding a few in, rebalancing the system as a whole uh to make sure we have a good standalone first phase. And we're still exploring additional funding for future phases. We want, we want the first phase to be able to stand by itself in case it's a little while before we fund the next phase. So, um, this First Amendment that is on your agenda tomorrow is memorializing those adjustments in the signage list. The contract price is not changing, so that original amount that we contracted is the same. They are honoring that price, even though, you know, the material costs has gone up substantially, so I appreciate it.
Kind of hurt uh for now. You're saying that for now?
You know, they've been on, this contractor, they've been, they've been understanding that, they've been going through this this process. But they're, they're gonna keep that price, so not changing the price. There have been a couple of substitutions in materials um due to restrict, restrictions and restraints uh on the timeline of material availability. But by and large, it's substantially the same project. Um, but we wanted to get these adjustments into the contract, so we know it is part of this first phase of vehicular. But we hope to break ground here the next, you know, several weeks. They've been working, you got permitting, um, getting the materials in stock and starting that manufacturing process. So we're coming along. So this, this contract amendment will be under consent items, uh, because we're not changing the timeline or the uh contract price.
Yeah.
And we did add a provision in there that if any of the materials come back unavailable as we run into a few that they've been in the workaround, if there's anything that is material to the ability to install this season, uh, they'll need to let us know. Um, there is some language that will allow them to kick it to next season, but only if those materials are not available for multiple providers.
Question on your timeline here?
Yep.
So under contract B, you've got June eighteenth, twenty twenty one, the phase one.
Yep.
Is that, have those been installed?
It's done.
Okay.
Phase one and bicycle is done.
All right. Wow, that's great.
So those are in place.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you go take a ride around the the Pineview loop, you'll see them there.
Okay, good.
I'll need to do that.
Get my bike back, yeah.
You don't have it back? Was it down there? Oh, better get two.
As an FYI, we did apply for uh the recreation grant, the, what was it?
Outdoor.
Outdoor recreation grant for phase two. And we're, I think we're, we're, I think we're gonna get it. So we had, we had to hustle and we had to, thank you, Cortland. We had to come up with some matching funding that we didn't have initially, but uh we found that and I think we're gonna get that grant.
That's good news.
Got a WFR two years.
Yeah, I know, no, no, that's uh Utah, Utah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. You know, they helped us fund the first, the phase that's going in, they put fifty thousand dollars into that. That's why a few of those signs, you'll see Utah Office of Outdoor Record right up the post. Um, they love, they they love the signs, they like showcasing it as an ideal wayfinding.
Exactly what I'm hoping.
And so.
That's free advertising all over.
That's exactly right, for those guys. I think they're excited to see us come in and happy that we've got magic funds. So we've got uh the trail impact fees, is what we're gonna be using. We gotta, we gotta adjust the impact fee plan just a little bit to add wayfinding touches to it, but we'll be used to that.
Yeah.
This is so good.
That's great.
We're so.
I tried to tell you about this five years ago, but you wouldn't listen to me.
Well, this is, this hasn't got anything to do with that. I'm excited for the funding she's done and what these guys have done as a group to work around this and make it work.
Me too.
I mean, as a large committee, it was going nowhere. And uh, you know, we tried to look at all different kinds of things and uh, but somebody finally had to grab it on their own. And you guys have done that, and I'm just really pleased with what you've done.
Scott and I had it turned in like, like thirty minutes before it was turned.
I don't care. And uh, you know, I'm telling you, uh, this was all but dead. And uh, you've uh reconstituted, you've been pushing it, I'm really proud of you. This is good. This is good.
It was a great addition.
You bet it will.
To the valley, yeah. So Commissioners, we have one more, uh, item.
Uh-huh.
We've got another agreement on your agenda tomorrow. This is a cooperative agreement between UDOT and county.
Oh.
The long-term maintenance responsibilities of these signs. So obviously, all the signs in the county rights of way are for us to maintain, but we'll have a couple of our signs in UDOT Rights of Way, we spell out how those are to be maintained, if there's any.
And they've agreed to do that? Boy, how good.
They've agreed for us to maintain our side, our signs on there.
On there right away.
Now, their signs, they've agreed that they will maintain, once we put up their signs, that they'll maintain the signed face, but we're responsible for posts.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because their posts are just cheap breakaway posts.
So what do those posts finally get made up?
Aluminum, and instead of the eight by, or sorry, instead of the ten by ten, uh, squares, we have to go with eight by eight, cause ten by ten is backordered till twenty twenty-three.
No, I understand that, but you know, that was the big holdup, we thought we could come up with the right post.
And that's what it's gonna look like.
I'm pleased with that.
Yeah, that's great, yeah, no, I'm happy.
We kept. It's not like we cared that much, the Commissioners, but others on that committee, it was back and forth and all over the place.
Decide on the design.
Yeah, it took a bit.
It did.
Get it going.
Yeah, you did a good job on that.
Very good, oh, thanks Scott.
Appreciate it.
Charlie?
There's, uh, one.
Me too, Cortland.
Well, one other subject, this is still just Phase One, this is not the entire wayfinding signage plan, so understand, once we get it in and everybody loves it, we'll probably come and talk to you guys at some point in the future about finding some money for some more.
Well, you know, this is the kind of project that we ought to be putting in, uh, four or five hundred thousand a year, just incrementally, little here, little there, and just keep it going. In fact, under wayfinding, in our capital, on our capital, we actually got a little money in there still, don't we?
I thought we did, yeah.
We did, that's the money that's for this.
Right.
It's just been rolling over every year until it's done.
Well, we're gonna have, uh, some capital meetings coming up here right away, and when we do that, we'll make sure that we don't remove this, that we keep this in there. Because I think we all agree, we wanna keep it going.
No.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, that gets removed, this, all this will be dead, so definitely keep it at two if you want to.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
This is wonderful.
Thanks, Jeff.
Steph, thank you. All right, two o'clock discussion regarding interlocal agreement with South Weaver City.
Yeah, we're back on schedule.
Yeah, we're back on schedule. In fact, we're a couple of minutes ahead. Hey, if Gary Myers is out there and Ashley and Sean, send them in. Yeah, this is great. Hey.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, Jake Jones with Nelson else.
Jake?
Jake Jones.
Jones, glad to meet you.
Steve Anderson.
Steve, we know you.
How you doing?
Great.
Good to see you. Where's our people, is Gary them out there?
I don't see them. Sorry, Gary. Tell them to.
Yeah, Gary and, uh, Sean, Cortland's here, and Ashley. Well, they know what we're talking about, so if you guys wanna jump into kind of introducing this.
Yeah, okay.
We're here, uh, we're the decision-making body, and, uh, will those guys get here? They're only.
We're still a little early, actually.
Yeah, but just a minute now. Oh.
Well, we were told you're running fifteen minutes behind, also.
Well, we were, but, uh, this last, uh, uh, last topic, I jumped right in on it, boom, we knocked it out like that. Put us back on schedule.
That was an easy one.
That's great.
All right, go ahead, this has to do with interlocal agreement with South Weaver City.
Yep, that's right.
All right.
Hey, how are you?
Better do it, cause we're starting.
Perfect.
I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody's here yet.
There we go.
I don't know if South Weaver, any of South Weaver folks stepped in here.
Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't show any of them, maybe we didn't invite them.
Well, I know at least the engineer was on the.
Are they on here?
I don't think so. But, well, we, we can kind of describe and, and just do a general talk, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, so we have this, this piece of property there in South Weaver.
And we have something shown up?
Yes, I have this, I have our, just kind of our plans, um, and I don't know if there's.
Where is it, is it by Adams Avenue?
No, it's, it's further west, it's actually right, almost as far west as you can go in South Weaver.
So it's right behind the, uh, LaRocca?
Yep, right, straight west of LaRocca.
Thank you, straight west?
Straight west, yeah, just down, just west of, uh, down South Weaver Drive, LaRocca. So.
So then you go, so there's a little road there, there's Raymond, you're gonna be that piece of property between Raymond and your other subdivision you just built there.
Uh, low, it's low there.
Sorry, I may know that area a little.
This isn't a great.
No, that's great, no, it's, yeah, the subdivision that was just that, I don't think there's anything further west than us, though.
Well, I'm thinking, okay, that's east, sorry, west.
Here we go.
Not east, west.
Got it all right there.
All right, Ash, this is cause it's a bounty, it's a split. There's, remember somebody was talking about moving the county line? Huh, what happened to that? Well, the South Weaver people were gonna help, right, but how's that work?
So Davis County, they didn't want anything to do with it.
Davis County, there's that name where LaRoc, or Raymond.
Yeah, you guys won't probably be able to show you, where, cause there's just, honestly, the, the property straddles the Davis Weaver County line, right, and so, so that's.
They're only gonna show us now Weaver County parts.
Yeah. But.
This better be one of those, wrong spot.
Nope, it is, so, yeah, so it's those.
All right, go a little further, drag that a little further up, there's LaRocca, the big building.
Yep.
Yeah, it's in there.
So just west of that triangle, that triangle's not us.
I'm not with you right there.
There's, here's the, oh, okay, South Weaver Drive. There's the county line, right here.
I know what, you can sit down, I know where we're at.
All right.
I just didn't know the exact parts, when you said, there's the building, I didn't see the building.
Here's the building, right.
Right. I got that. But that's in Davis County.
No, that's in Weaver.
That's Weaver, no, LaRocca's in Davis County.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, this is Davis County.
Well, so where's the Weaver County line here?
Well, south of eighty-four.
That's the line, he's on the line right there.
So that's the county line?
That's the county line.
Oh.
Yep.
So Harper. She was willing to give all those to Davis County, cause I didn't want it.
Well, we tried to negotiate with them, but they got to be knuckleheads.
All right, keep going, you guys.
I'm a little passionate about it.
Yep, so, so if you look at the, the parcels, that triangle's not us, but those three rectangle or polygons are, are us.
That one, that one?
Yep, that one, that one, and that.
That one, so you're right along the freeway.
Yep, right along the freeway, and we, and we have, obviously, we have a bunch more acres to the, to the south that's in Davis County. But in terms of, yeah, I, I, I guess really the, the goal is to say, hey, what, what do we wanna do with those, with those three polygons, if you will? Um, you know, whether it's annexation or.
Well, I see four here, not three. One, two, three, four.
That triangle's not us.
Okay.
Triangle's in there.
Yep.
That's.
So triangle, South Weaver City.
Yeah, that, you know what that was, is a detention pond years ago was built back in about nineteen ninety-two, because I was their city engineer back then.
Were you?
Yeah.
Well, but you've, they, they have obviously allowed somebody to build in there now.
That was that Harper Way, and then that's where all their storm drainage went to a retention pond right there.
Right there in the end of it.
At the end of.
All right, so you're, we're talking about these three parcels right now.
Yes, sir.
How much dirt we talking? Size weight.
Oh, that's a good question.
Go to the big one.
Sure.
I've looked at, so five and a half, eight, so there's probably six acres there, six or four.
A little over six, probably, huh?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's right, cause it's twenty, I think it's twenty-seven is the.
So, what do you wanna do with it?
So, we, we might as well put a subdivision there, uh, continuing Harper Way down and just put lots along that north side, so.
How's your second way out?
Second way out, we actually have to build one on South Weaver Drive. So.
And connect you out there.
So you, you, you're this property in the south right there, where, where it is you've got on the contract?
Yep, it's, it's all the same.
Well, see Kingston Drives, that ends it right there, so it's made you go through it.
How many lots is this subdivision you're gonna do? Fifty-six? And that'll take you all the way from those parcels that are but I eighty-four all the way down to South Weaver. Yeah, all the way down to South Weaver.
You're gonna put fifty-six homes in six acres?
No, no, in the, in the full thirty-three acres, so including Davis County.
So they're looking at that big open spot between those three pieces?
Right there toward the arrow is.
Yeah, and south.
All the way to South Weaver Drive. Down there, that's right.
So you'll take another road right where your arrow is, right there. There'll be a road right there going in, that'll be the main way people get in and out of there.
Yeah, that's right.
They won't go up Raven, they'll go up, and then they'll, the connectivity between Harper and Kingston.
What about this beach right there?
Yeah, that's not us, uh, it's, it's somebody else, but, um.
It's the acres, you'd like to have that one, wouldn't you?
Of course, you won't get late caps.
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
So what, what they've come to us and asked.
What are they asking for?
They're, they're proposing that this road continue up, and it, it reaches into this parcel, and then heads south. They are proposing to build the road water lines and within the county, and wanted to know if we were gonna be okay with that. We, um, started looking into this, they, their proposal is to not subdivide any of the property that is in Weaver County right now.
Yeah, those three pieces.
They'd have to follow the Weaver County land use ordinances to do that. So their proposal is to build this road for now, and then work forward on annexing that, those parcels into South Weaver City. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Which would basically annex into Davis County and out of Weaver County, right?
Well, not really.
That's the queen.
We found out. We won't be annexed, we won't work with them on that, after the way they treat us on this other deal, well, it'll just be no, no.
Thank you.
It's Weaver County.
We tried.
Yeah, we tried to work with them.
For the last two years, and all they've done is done the very bare minimum, and now it's come back, and now they want a little help and. There's a couple of words for them, and it ain't happy birthday.
So, one of the questions we had is can a city, um, straddle, uh, county boundaries?
Yes, they can.
Doesn't Hooper and, or does?
Yes, yeah, Hooper does, that's right.
Drapers, yeah.
Yeah, that's common.
So, well, in South Weaver City owns ground in Weaver County right here already.
Obviously.
Yeah, they could, they could own land, but can they administer land?
Yes. It just makes a crap for the people who own the property, they do it currently right now, people all along, so can you take that, who's driving?
Me.
Go down here, go a little further west, we'll just give you a quick little, no, go this way. I'll do like Scott, go like this.
Why don't you get a touch, can you do that?
I, we had one, it doesn't work. Okay, come down this way a little more. All right, so what's happened, can you pull it up a little more? So what happens is, is the, is the, uh. The, it's down here, gotta come this way a little more. What happens is, is the county line follows the river, but look where the river is. Look where the county line is, it's gonna, it's gonna continue in your lifetime, the county line will continue to change, that's a bunch of crap. What we've tried to do is say, hey, let's, every twenty years, elected people go through this. So we said, hey, look, let's take this, let's go this way a little more, and let's follow something that won't move, like a freeway. And let's move the county line, so this goes right along here like this.
That would make sense.
Well, we got, we got the, the South Weaver, and you went in the same room, and us, and, and Davis County, and we all agreed to do it. Well, now, the attorneys for Davis County are giving the Commissioners, in my opinion, bad counsel, because one of them's Kendall, and this goes back for generations. It's a Kendall issue, the Kendall's and the Bybes against the Pauls, this is a multi-generational problem, Hatfields and McCoys is what I'm telling you about. Anyway, this is the easiest way to do, is to just take this all the way along and follow the sneaking freeway, which will never move, and the rivers can always move. Now, sorry, my point, my point is, these property owners right here all own property across the river and into Davis County, and they get two tax notices, one from Weaver County, one from Davis County every year. So to answer your question, it happens in Youena, Hooper, and it can happen, and South Weaver, and, and it'll happen here too.
So kind of being aware that, that moving the county line would hit such a roadblock, we were nervous about giving them any inclination that at some point, they would be able to annex into Davis County.
Well, yeah, that's not our decision.
Right, and so we, we wanted to make sure we had all the assumptions out on the table, and that we're all dealing with the same facts. Then where we saw that, okay, uh, city can function on either side of a county line. What we ended up looking at was, can we put together an interlocal agreement that spells out all the understandings that we have, so that it's something that we can track as we go forward, and, and the assumptions that we're making, so that South Weaver has something to work off of, we have something to work off of, and an understanding, instead of, well, yeah, we thought this, or we thought that. And so that's what we're here to propose, is that we look at doing an interlocal agreement with South Weaver City, um, so that they can annex that, those parcels into South Weaver City, and manage that, and look at the land use, and work with them on the subdivision.
But, add a little bit.
Uh.
So, these parcels are already part of South Weaver City's annexation plan.
Oh, okay.
So they're, they've already been included by South Weaver City in its expansion area, and so what we would, uh, obviously, it's not the county's, it's not Weaver County's choice.
That's right.
South Weaver City is going to annex, but they've already said they're planning to do that, and so what we're thinking is, you know, based on the assumption that might move forward, we could enter into an interlocal agreement like we did at Powder Mountain, because part of Powder Mountain is in Cache County. And Weaver County is actually the land use authority through an interlocal agreement for those Powder Mountain parcels, even though they're in Cache County. We can do, if you want to, something like that, where we make South Weaver City the land use authority for those parcels for this purpose, and then just put it all on them, they get to approve, they get to collect the fees, Weaver County still collects any taxes, if that's, you know, and, a thing, but.
Why do we need to do that? They already have the right to do all that, if they annexed it, they approved the fees, they approved what's built, or the zoning body.
It, it's a timing issue, because they haven't annexed it yet, and so the developers wanna move forward.
So my point is, tell the developers to annex it, go to the city and annex it.
That could happen, I mean, right now, it's just a road that would go through there, so the annexation doesn't, wouldn't really matter, as long as we can do the road and the utilities, and then let the annexation process go through for, correct me if I'm wrong, Jake. But let the annexation process go through later, that that would be annexed into South Weaver, we would be, we would, their land use authority would govern what we, um, build there, the, the taxing units would be in Weaver County, I guess you would have to assign South Weaver City a mill levy and Weaver County too, for that little piece that they would get their, their tax from.
What do you mean assign, they already have one.
I doubt it.
Are you talking about after subdivision?
I'm talking after you, subdividing, how do they get their property taxes, their mill levy, South Weaver Cities paid to them after the fact, uh, um, even though nothing, the county boundary's not changing, but there would have to be a mill levy.
Yeah, we will continue to collect the tax on that, like we do today.
Yep.
And we'll continue to submit it to the county, or to the city, like we do today. And we'll continue to submit it to the county or to the city like we do today.
Right, but I doubt you have any in the South Weaver right today that they don't, or like you do with Hooper and and that, you.
Right.
You send, and so you, that's what I'm saying, so it'd be the same thing.
Exactly the same, and then we do that every day.
Have to have an interlo, well, you'd have to have some kind of an interlo, some kind of an. Well, just, I guess there has to be something that says you're okay with that, wouldn't there?
It's in the county.
Yeah, so two options here, basic options. For what they're proposing in Weaver County, we have them submit everything to Weaver County staff. To review and approve based on our ordinances. Or we take the approach that in anticipation of the annexation that is proposed. We're just going to turn everything over right now to South Weaver City and let them deal with it the way they would under their city ordinances. So I.
Actually, I just assumed, I just assumed. Uh do an MOU and send it to them and say, look, we're under under, you have got this in your plan. So the road that you put through, even though it will come into our area partially or slightly. We are allowing that under this uh memorandum of understanding that you're gonna come and annex these three parcels.
And they would become in.
Why don't they just annex it right now, they can do it just like that.
They might not understand that they can do that, I don't know, but.
Man, we just got that little deal from Marion Slatorville that they're gonna do.
That brought up.
And that was nothing.
Yeah, that would seem to me to be the easiest thing.
But then there's still, it'd have to be the taxing thing, so.
Stop worrying about that taxing.
I just.
We do that as a county, so we, that will just happen in our daily operation. So stop worrying about that. That's right, we'll take care of it, we will pass that along.
We do that a lot.
Well, unless unless you're saying your plan has like twenty units per acre, let's just leave this in the county, is that what you were, kidding me?
I hate to tell you that that thought entered my mind while I was here, was here, that you could come in there and ask the county to rezone this for you. And the way Davis County's treated, we probably look upon that very favor. Put a trailer board in there.
We don't wanna make any, I don't wanna end in your ass, he's such a great guy.
My, our thing is, is it'd be nice if South Weaver finished their original commitment with us through Davis and Davis County to finish. This proposal, our guys over here in in surveying have to put tens of thousands of dollars a time in, and they've just, they won't even respond to us now.
Well, stop worrying about the taxing, we'll take care of it. They'll just take care of itself.
My biggest concern was, yeah, my bigger worry was them being able to operate outside of the county, but. Who operate outside the city? South Weaver City.
Since it's not in their, you're concerned now because it's not in.
Yeah.
Their city.
I was worried it was gonna require moving the county line, which I didn't think was gonna happen, and so. I didn't want them to build a road thinking at some point they're gonna be do this, that will do these lots, which.
Isn't the plan for detention basin up there?
Yeah.
In that triangle.
But also, but also there's some lots.
Well, yeah, and in that one triangle, that's what South Weaver has now, that the property they actually have fee title to is a detention, actually.
But as a developer, you ought to go to the city and say, right now, we've met with the county, they want that you to incorporate that, annex it.
Great, yeah, I I think, I think from our perspective, that was one of the main issues. The other issue is just, hey, can you build the infrastructure now? And I think you answered the first question, yeah, it looks like it's gonna, it's gonna work, assuming South Weaver City, we don't have to deal with Davis County, it sounds like, which is great news. But the the second question is, can we put the infrastructure in? Um and our assumption all along was that we could, it's our property, if we don't turn over, we'll turn it over, but that's why we kind of.
I'd really like to see your construction access off to South Weaver Drive, instead of having to go through Down Raymond and over there on Kingston, is it? Or Kingston or Harper? I'd really love to see you do a service road coming in there and require all those big trucks and everything to come in off South Weaver Drive.
So the uh, will the road be a hundred percent in that property before it makes the turn and comes down? Or just partially, because it almost looks like it's gonna be just partial, it's gonna be so close.
It's easy here, it's gonna be, it starts off in Davis County and.
You can't, you can't see where the county is.
So the county line is the bottom line there.
Right there, that's it?
No, on the far, on the left side.
So left side, right there? Oh, I see what you're saying. Right here, Scott, right here, Weaver County, Davis County, right here.
Right there.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, so there's like, there's one, two, three partial lots in Weaver County and one, two, three, four, five. Six, six permanent.
Whatever this lot, right here, whatever that street is there, because that's your other axis right there.
Yeah.
That's the one I'd like to see you do. I'd like to see you connect that into South Weaver right away. So I don't know what it's.
The answer to my question is that does go into the county.
Yeah, it's right here, I'm talking right here, take this up.
These, these lots.
No, the road. I was gonna say, if it come in.
We don't care.
And then feed this whole thing. Oh, it's this one is where you want it, sorry. Yeah, so before you start. The other thing is, yeah. Do, say, South Weaver, that.
Yeah, it's true. I don't have an issue with that. You can do it through an MOU.
It wasn't the city, it was the county.
I know, but the city will put. You just want an understanding with South Weaver City, so we don't get in a battle with them in the future.
And they can annex it, no.
I mean, that's all.
Weaver County will get their taxes off these lots.
Yeah, we'll get that, don't worry about the taxes.
You'll get your taxes and.
We always make sure we get the taxes.
Don't worry about the taxes.
But uh, yeah. I was, if I was you guys right now, I'd I'd go South Weaver City and say, look, we want to annex. Uh into your city right now. And the county wants you to take that.
And they did, that's great, that's great, they don't have to do, originally we thought we were gonna have to do with Davis County, so that's why we just got started with phase one. That's why I wanted the pipes, so uh so that's good to know that we have your blessing. And and like, so we have your blessing in terms of South River Annex, and do we also have a blessing in terms of uh just laying the infrastructure if we do before?
You do, but now I look to Courtland, because he makes his cross Ts and dot Is. And I understand that, and I understand this, if if South Weaver hasn't. Uh annexed this by time you get ready. Then we will have to have some kind of an agreement that says we're okay with it. I think you could almost do this as an MOU, I'm not sure we need anything more than that. But actually, we'll have, we'll require you to pay fees to start working in there though. So, yeah.
All the.
This is gonna be beneficial to you if they can annex this before, yeah. This is not, it's not still to do, where they've already done, it's in their master plan, all they'd have to do is have a hearing, isn't it?
I looked at it a week or two ago, but I can't remember the details.
Still follow the annexation process.
So I think they just have to have a hearing, and then the city has, send us notice, so that we'll, we probably won't even come to it. In the past, uh, I, we won't come, that will we?
When, in your county surveyor will have to review it.
Sure, but we won't even come to it, because we don't care. And nothing, you're in. I would think you could do this in a month, six weeks, way before you could get in there and start running anything.
I hope so, yeah, I mean, as we've talked, everyone's kind of, we've never done this before, so, I don't know, so, so this, that's good to know.
And I understand they have, but all they have, don't they just apply? You send us notice of what your intent is. And uh, we just got one of those from uh Marion Slaterville. And once we get to that, I think it, is there, they don't have to fill out an application.
I don't think Weaver County has much involvement in that unless you choose to oppose it, so.
And we won't, so beyond that, you just have to have some attorneys draft this thing up and send us notice and. Make app, and start it.
And is this Davis County? Surveyor review, this is not in Davis County.
No, our uh, our people will review it, but this is the city's.
But you'll review it for that and then and then have the the county stamp on it and it's sent to the lieutenant governors as.
That's right, so the city's gonna make application, they're gonna send it to us and we'll stamp it and send it back.
Yeah, but it'll, this'll still be, this, these pieces will still be, I mean, you've got several lots here. That are totally gonna be in Weaver County, and these others will be prorated or proportioned as.
That's right.
Just like they are, just like they are.
There'll be a property line between the the two parcels on the one parcel. Which is a pain, but. When you guys can't agree on where the county line is.
We hadn't agreed.
I know you did.
You need to talk to those guys.
I, and I agree with you.
Give this whole thing to Davis County, said, okay, go ahead and take it, we don't care. We wanted to, we wanted to help them and they wouldn't even butter the bread, we were gonna put the peanut butter or bologna or anything.
Go ahead and do it, we're fine with it.
Yeah, go ahead, great, thanks. Alright, thank you, this is really good, you've done a nice job.
Thanks, yeah, we're excited for it, it's gonna be good though.
You don't have much other access off of South Weaver other than that one bringing down. Some of those lots are deep.
There's actually a air force base.
That you have with this.
Alright, alright, thanks y'all. Alright, Chad Meyer offer, Sean and Gary, so you're representing Sean, Gary's here, where's Chad?
Probably on his way.
Yeah. I don't. I haven't even looked at it, so we need to sit down and go over that.
Hey, while we've got a few minutes. I'd like to email all three of you a document that was sent to me. NRCS, we've been talking to him for about two years about funding to redo Utah Dam up there. Yeah, they they sent me an agreement on Friday uh with your name on it, Commissioner Jenkins, since you're chair. Just kind of talking about how how this will move forward, so I'll send it to you guys to review, and if you're comfortable with it. Um, can you sign that and send it back to me, or do you need to do a work session on that?
Is it approved? I mean, they didn't give us money?
Well, yeah, so she said, uh, she said in here, Commissioner, she said, uh.
You know, we gotta have this in a work session, we can't sign something like that and send it up.
That, that's fine.
Yeah, so next Monday, you gotta put down a work session. Yeah.
I'll go talk to.
We just need to know what the requirements are.
We want to know, and I don't want to cut these guys out.
And and that, and that was more of a question for proper.
Can't have you bringing it to commission meeting without us seeing it in advance.
So I, I printed off. So for you guys to discuss and look at it. Later.
Oh mighty, they think that we have to go hire this to get somebody? No, I don't either. I wanna put it out that uh.
Oh, I'd be, that makes sense to me.
I think we need to put it out for ninety thousand, I think we ought to butt that down to ninety. It's just a little bit, make John feel good. Put it out.
Listen, this is in your portfolio.
I don't, and then uh.
Yeah, it's ready to go, we just need to get them late.
TBD, to be determined. So that's what we're asking. DLQ, that too, either one, I'm putting on that.
Boy, I appreciate you have my back right there to those guys, I didn't have to say anything, I was so glad about that.
But I'm with you here, this is tough, I, it gets me irked a little. I'll be damned if I'm gonna sit here and treat them good when they stuck out of squirrely where you know where. I I just not gonna do it.
Hey, they're a bunch of nice guys, go over there, they'll take care, yeah, they'll take care of it.
What's fair is fair, they they taught us how to treat, you know?
Well, I tell you, I had a meeting the other day with Randy, and he told me that uh.
Giordano or?
Randy Elliott.
Okay.
He says uh, uh Lorraine.
Lorraine?
Oh, she just feels very deflated about what Bob did there. I'll bet, to go down there and actually fight, actually fight. How would you feel if I wanted to foul somebody for you, your office? Well, you talk about a poke in the eye. No, you can't. That's just so bad.
That's poor.
Yeah. I mean, we try so hard to be respectful to each other here, and that's what keeps uh, that's what keeps this place uh running so smoothly. Uh, we might not agree, and we both know against each other all the time, but we don't uh, we don't poke each other in the eye like that. No. And even if you wanted to support him, you just keep your mouth shut and support him, but you don't, we have a file. That's too far, that's too far.
Listen, you might have been from place, I gotta tell you, I was coming home every night. Logan, Brigham, or one, one. You know, and I'm driving out there, just get past the Wheeler Bay coming home. And I look out, and the lights from Plain City, it's like a uh, city that's set on a hill to not be hit. And they're out in the flat. But I, you look down there, I just thought, what's all those lights? It's amazing.
It is, but I tell you, you know, I'm getting more and more mad at these cities that just won't, you know? Just that meeting was downstairs, uh down there, and that lady said, what are you gonna do about horrible housing for our children? Uh they're sitting there talking about it, and I, is all I could do to keep my mouth shut, I wanted to jump up on that.
You did jump up.
Well, yeah, but I wanted to say something, I wanted to say, well, there's Plain City. They're all mad at us, and all we did is say, well, their ordinance says third acre lots, we'll give you exactly third acre lots. And they're mad at us right now because it's a hundred more than they wanted to give, I was like, good night, you guys. It's still nothing compared to everything else. You know, we could have gone in there and given quarters or eight, or we could have done all kinds of things, we didn't.
You know, my son was on six thousand eight hundred square foot lot, lot.
Yeah.
And put his house. Went down there, eight hundred square foot.
My house, Saratoga Springs.
Oh, I know it, they put that house, that that, the the driveway from the street to his garage door is as wide as this tape. That's, and that's how wide, he doesn't even have this much width between his house.
That's in Saratoga?
Saratoga, it might be this wide between this house and the house next to it. They're as happy as.
Well, we was, who, I was talking to somebody the other day, and they said the average price. Of a home going up in Huntsville the other day is four hundred thou, or four, four hundred dollars a square foot. In the upper valley. Today, that's construction cost up there, four hundred dollars square foot in the upper valley.
Wow.
And down here in the lower valley is between two fifty and three hundred. With three hundred, you figure about this, uh about the smallest houses you can get. Small little three bedroom are about fourteen hundred square feet, well, at uh, two fifty a foot, figure that out. Fourteen hundred, I mean, that's four hundred fifty, five hundred, that, what is that?
You're under half. Three hundred fifty thousand.
Well, that doesn't count a lot.
That doesn't account a lot.
Well, right now, Plain City, my son's dealing on an acre lot today. And it looks like he's gonna pay for uh three hundred thousand dollars for that acre lot.
With improvements?
Uh huh. Well, just in the street.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but. Three hundred thousand dollars for a lot.
I remember, I I remember turning down a lot. I remember I had a chance to buy a lot on the Davis golf course. And that blood sucker out there, he wanted forty three thousand eight hundred dollars for that lot.
How big of a lot was it?
It was uh between a quarter and a third. And I thought, well, I was, it was twenty, thirty, again, my brother-in-law, I told my brother-in-law, he went and bought one. And two years later, he made sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, you you build wealth with real estate, because they don't make anymore of it.
That's how, that's how you overcome uh uh inflation.
So my son, I was gonna tell you this, so my son that has a little teeny, all he has is a two-car garage and a kitchen and a little. Family room, and then stairs going up to all the living room above the garage and everything else, he paid two hundred eighty thousand dollars for it, and everybody was bidding. And he wasn't the high bid, but they liked him, whatever, he paid two hundred eighty thousand, the house across the street. He's got a finished basement now, because he finished, house across the street just sold for five sixty.
Oh my gosh.
So, Harv, did you?
So this is two years, no, yeah, so there are two years.
So I'm gonna finish it, okay?
He's about, that's about three hundred thousand dollars. And what, just because people want him so bad?
Someone's gonna finish off my grudge out back to live in.
Yeah.
Okay, when we get started?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I got before you, I got two different things, um I'm bringing for you the municipal waste water planning program, which I'll probably get on the agenda for a week from tomorrow as well on the commission. But I wanted to sit down and kind of go through it real quick.
We want to briefly with you.
Yeah, we want to know what you're doing before you.
So essentially what this is, it's something every year that the state has us go through, um and and we look at a few different things, we look at how many new connections we have. How many new, uh how how many, uh how much more line we've added to it, uh financially, how you're looking at doing as far as uh. Uh entity, and then you also look at if you've had any problems like uh they. Come a listed discharge or something, you know, flooding the basements, uh you know, flooding out into the streets or into drainage or anything like that. Luckily with us, we haven't had any, I mean, we're fairly new, most of our systems in really good shape. Um, you know, I think financially we're looking pretty good, and financially, I'll I'll go through that a little bit more with you here as soon as we get done with this, looking at the the user fees. Um but right now, I I think overall, as far as the western part of the county, we're looking really good, uh the upper valley and some of those systems. Uh Commissioner Harvey's asked us to kind of come in once a year and give an update on that, and that's kind of what we're.
So this is something that you're submitting to uh municipal waste park plan?
Division of Water. Yeah, yeah, they have us fill this out every year, and we bring it to you usually as a resolution. Uh so that'll be on the agenda next week, I was I was kind of talking to Courtland, hoping that we could just take care of it in this meeting, but. Uh it needs to go before you as a resolution.
That's okay.
Might be a consent item, I don't know. Might be a consent item, I don't know. Um, yeah.
If it's a resolution, it won't be a consent item. Okay.
Yep, it comes to you as a resolution. I'm excited for it.
Ah, Harv, um, this goes back, right back to, you know, I just can't hardly vote for this. And the reason I can't is because on there, we said we list the six, the impact fee, six hundred nineteen dollars and fifteen cents.
I know, I saw that.
Well, the fact of the matter is. Uh, as a, as a system, this is a small system with a lift station, but it's a larger system. It's not running any wastewater lines. They don't have anything to connect to. I mean, you know what I mean? Uh, I struggle with it because I I think that ought to be eight or nine hundred, two, three hundred dollars extra.
So and right now, alls they're doing is asking what we're presently charging, not what.
I know, but. Do we have?
We don't, we're not.
To this because of what we did? I mean, if we submit like this with everything on it, then it's pretty tough for us to go out and raise the impact fee.
No, we can, so we're submitting this, this is what we we currently are. We, right now, we actually are working with getting the RFP out to change the impact fees. We're gonna do a a study.
Doesn't this go back and restate what we did in twenty twenty?
So this is from the twenty twenty-one information.
It's a synopsis of what happened.
Right, so it's a snapshot back then, not today.
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that then.
Yeah, but I'm I'm with you on that other con- your concept, I think is valid.
So what's happening, you know? Davis County here a little while ago went out and said, look. We want everybody to develop and be hooked to a, uh, septic system out there. So if you're unwilling to do that, we're changing the zoning to one house per ten acres. They did, and they did that. We did that a year ago, year and a half, whatever.
That's a.
And a lot of people out west are mad, but they're saying, look. Let's get the sewer running, do this then.
That's right.
Well, that's exactly what we're struggling with out there. People come in and, uh, build and then they say, okay, we're in, we don't want anybody behind us. So I feel like saying, well, okay, if you don't want anyone behind you, then we'll fix that. We'll make it one house per ten acres, just like Davis County. Well, boy, I suspect you'd hear those guys squill and holler and complain like crazy then.
Some of them.
The non-growthers would love it.
Like Chad mentioned though.
If you got a ten-acre parcel out there and you're no, uh, no brother, nobody's gonna come in. Or twenty acres, because you're, you're, you are, uh, taking ten of it up yourself. So you'd have to have more than twenty acres to build.
Like Chad mentioned, though, we have an RFP in progress to redo and recalibrate our our impact fees. So most of them will.
Good.
Will be going. So.
Great. All right.
So in addition to this, we go through, look, I mean, our largest, uh, line out there is can be twelve inches. We we average right around nine feet. Um, and this is one that kind of surprised me and and miles for what we have in sewer line right now is eleven point three miles.
Really?
Sewer line is what we've got out there right now. So we're actually starting to.
Where's out there?
That means for everything that we have as far as the county, so lower valley and then everything in the upper valley as well. So each of our onsite systems, all that linear.
Is that in here what you just said?
Yeah, it's on, uh.
On page what?
It's in two of seventeen on this, but that's not correct. So we are.
Just for the impact.
Yeah, right there, two seventeen, right?
Yes.
Eleven point three miles.
And I did include.
Is most of that in the upper valley?
So no, actually, uh, right around, I I believe in the western part of the county, we're right around thirty-six or thirty-nine thousand linear feet. So the majority of it is out west, I believe.
Out west.
And the county owns it. Well, I'd like to put that into a district gauge.
We need to. So I think when I started there, I was thinking we were right around maybe a thousand linear feet.
Now we're thirty-nine? Thirty-nine, a thousand, not thirty-nine hundred.
So you look at eleven miles, you times that by fifty-two eighty, that's gonna give you.
Yeah.
About fifty-two thousand, so we've still got, I mean, not too much behind it up in the upper valley either, just.
You're probably closer to sixty thousand feet, yeah.
I believe it. This is good, Chad. You've done a good job here.
So that's something will be before you. I guess, like, most of our our system, the the oldest part of it's, you know, two thousand and three, so. We're in really good shape. I mean, we're looking at this, uh.
Yeah.
You've got one or two little areas that we go through and when the camera, we look at it, but nothing really substantial right now, so.
So I see, we're gonna get together and talk about this main line. Uh, we, well, I'm getting off subject here. Let's stay on subject and then I'll say that for you.
So the second aspect of this is kind of like Commissioner Harvey asked me to look at it over a year ago and unfortunately, I have looked at it, but I have not made a substantial amount of. Of footage in that unfortunately.
And what's that?
Uh, rate, looking at the fees and our rate structure as far as everything in the sewer. So I have actually looked at it. Um, it's just been a little bit longer of a process than I had hoped. So I do have, um. Some information right here to show you.
So three hundred and eighty, so that three hundred and eighty right there, do we send invoices to them?
Uh, right now, yeah, right now, uh, we do send out billings to everybody. So I think we have the availability.
Well, when you say we're not a sewer system, it sure appears to me that we're a sewer system right there. We we collect and bill and are part of.
Yeah.
So we are going through trying to look at that a little bit more. I've got GIS that actually is, uh, doing a snapshot of of all the parcels that are connected. So we can go out and actually make sure who's connected. It's been a little bit difficult for me to track those when they they get a final occupancy and stuff like that, so. Um, those numbers may change once I get, uh, a little bit more.
Yeah, you think we might possibly have to have people connected and we're not building.
So, um, I think we're fairly.
Because that ha- does happen.
It it does. The only ones that I'm, I know that way, I just did this not too long ago, a couple of months ago, so if it is, it would just be those recent.
When I was the mayor of Plain City, we did that and we found about fifteen or eighteen that had slipped through our fingers that had been the. Uh, had been on the system for not an enormous time, but several have been there three years.
They're connected?
No, we knew that. We did find one that connected without a zone. But we also found others that had connected and we had just, uh.
Caught them and.
Well, uh, the process to connect to the billing and get it going, I just slipped through our fingers somehow.
So we have some of the ones like.
Yeah.
Individuals who the sewer runs in front of their home, we ask them to connect and sometimes if they have to pump, we don't require them to connect right at that point. Um, but but we've have every once in a while where they go to. So if they, if they have to install a pump to be able to get up to the sewer, if the sewer is more shallow. And if they have a good septic system, we haven't really.
I see.
Forced it. Um, there's only been two and one of them's now connected. Um, but it's been tough with.
In that case, we should start billing the monthly fee, no matter what.
Shouldn't we? And and in the past, the Christians have been apt to that, but we can definitely do that.
Well, I tell you, that's what we do in Plain City. The minute you're within three hundred feet, uh, yeah, we we start sending the bill. And, uh, it's only fifteen or twenty dollars a month. It isn't a lot of money.
Hey, if you, if you watch over your pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves.
Well, that's what we figured and that's why we do it. And so, uh, then eventually they say, okay, we decide we're gonna connect and they have to pay the fee to connect. But we, but, uh, we we start billing the monthly fee and then they're within three hundred feet because, uh, the law says you have to, uh, connect.
So this is the next thing I've kind of looked at, uh, going through and doing the fees.
It's good, Chad.
I think I can share the screen with this. I just wanted to kind of go through with you on how I actually have been looking at doing, uh, the fees and setting them up. So if you have any, uh, I guess, suggestions or anything, uh, I'd be, I'd love to hear. Essentially, the first thing I do is regular maintenance, a fee that I kind of look at and I've I've been working a lot with Scott Park. We're tracking this a lot better on getting the regular maintenance. Things that we do as far as, uh, regular and routine inspections out there. Uh, the second thing is hydrojet the system, so. We we look at on all the new stuff, I usually let them go closer to seven to ten years, whether they're new, but any of the older stuff. We look in at trying to go through and hydrojet and TV them just to do it. And it's tough to really know the problems unless you do that type of inspection, so. Each of those, we're looking at about sixty-five cents a a linear foot. What I did, um, I added a three percent inflation to that, so. Each year that would get a little bit more by three percent up to that five years when we would actually do it, so. Trying to, trying to, I mean, wouldn't help out this year with the inflation being a little bit more, but, uh, we're starting out right now, um. The the next thing this is for the upper valley ones would be a new drain field. Um, you know, they essentially have a lifespan of about thirty years is what they're saying. Um, we don't really know. Some of them might last a lot longer, some of them might not last quite that long. Um, but thirty years is kind of the average that I've heard, so that's the the year that I, or the amount of time that I'm looking at there. So pumping the septic tank, this applies to a few more systems in the upper valley where we've got to go through and pump those, uh, tanks. Uh, a little bit here, that's a little, a little problem with these sometimes is, is, you know, like in Bailey Acres, it's a, it's a fairly large tank, sixteen thousand gallons and so. To get a pumper truck up there and pump it while it's in use, usually we're pumping a little bit more. Um, right now, we've been able to use A-one pumping, which now has, I think, four trucks that each one of those is about forty-five hundred gallons, so we're actually.
That's pretty good.
So you're pumping every three years?
So with it, it's about every three years. Uh, what happens with it is the top starts getting really hard.
Yeah.
So essentially, right now, to be honest with you, in in Bailey Acres up there, there's kind of a fairly large chunk down in there that we just can't get out, but.
Really?
In fact, the system.
The pump won't break it up, can't get it out?
No, we've even used some high pressure, uh, you you know, they've got a water truck with high pressures, they know it, and we broke a little bit of it up over the years, but. Um, a lot of it is, to be honest with you, is those flushable rags, um, they get stuck in there and you get your greases and stuff on. And it just kind of solidifies. And so, when when I started here in, uh, two thousand and five, um. It was a learning curve for me on a lot of this. I think our first time really pumping it went way too long. And we were probably.
Yeah, but you know, people on septic systems need to understand, they they can't flush rags in there. They can't flush tampons and and that kind of stuff. They can't do that. This is system, the, will not break those up.
It's a huge lack of information, like, it's it's unbelievable how many people use those things and it's.
Everybody on a septic system knows that.
It's not just septics. Your your mechanical systems don't like that stuff.
I understand that. Well, you go out to Plain City to the, uh, sewer ponds and walk along the edge and everywhere along the edge, you've got those little.
White mice.
That's right.
So I'd like to say that as well, uh, even with a lot of our onsite systems, Commissioner, we get individuals that think they're just part of a sewer system. They can just flush whatever they want.
Yeah, a lot of those people just don't understand they're going into a, what type of system they're going.
So each year, we, well, probably twice a year, I get Ron to send out a little list of saying, do not flush these items. But everybody that I've talked to when I'm on site to a lot of these, I get to interact with some of the individuals, they go, what? I never see it. You know, most of them don't even look at the bill. They just pay it, don't look at the information.
So, uh, what are you gonna do about this blockage you have up there that?
It's not a blockage, it's just actually.
I know, it's just places sitting there floating, but it will become a blockage as it builds and that's what other. It affixes to it as it continues to grow and gets larger.
So it's not actually getting any larger that that we can tell, but what you what you're looking at, you're looking at a septic tank that's probably twenty feet long by twelve feet wide. You've got a baffle on the outside and so it 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 hasn't. Not to say there couldn't potentially be a blockage, but it hasn't. I mean, everything that comes in that septic tank could be a potential blockage.
The only way to really remove it would be to excavate down, get into it, right?
Well, I just say you really can't do it because, uh, you have to go through the opening. You can't, this is a fiberglass tank, right?
This is not. It is a concrete tank.
You got to break the tank up.
Eventually, we're gonna have to replace this.
Hell, that's gonna be a huge undertaking.
Should to build a cast-in-place tank.
Is the top of it in sections where you could remove one?
The top of it's all unsolved.
Yeah, see, you really can't do that.
Kind of stuck, that's.
But the the difficult thing is too, is you, you you know, you're twenty feet long, you've got a manhole here and a manhole here, and so the jetter, you know, he's shooting this way, trying to break it up, then it goes this way. And then you shoot back this way.
I know, so when you, uh, when you, uh. Pump that down, do they pump that so low that there's almost no water on the bottom?
We've never been able to get it that dry.
I was gonna say, I've never seen anybody.
Maybe a foot or two. I mean, most of our time, that sixteen thousand gallon tank, we're pumping the nineteen to twenty thousand gallons out of.
You know, the problem you have here is nobody wants to climb in that tank with hip boots. And that's what it takes. You know, to do something like that, uh, you have to climb in there with hip boots and then you gotta take a sledgehammer. Or a, uh, something like that and break this fudge up.
So we're getting pretty close to the to pumping that again, so it'll be interesting to see if it's, if it's, you know, softened up in any way, if we can break.
So let me tell you, I I think, uh, you ought to, uh, ask the people who pump this, because they do this for a living and if there's somebody hardened into this, it's them. So when they get it all pumped up, I I think you ought to ask them what they would charge you to get out in there and break that blockage up. To remove it.
Most of them just comes into a confined spaces, deal where you're spending all the money more for your confined, confined space entry than actual removal, but. I'm sure it would be an interesting amount, but.
Well, point is, is it will continue until it eventually causes you a problem. Don't you agree?
Um, I'm fairly, to be honest with you, Commissioner, I'm fairly comfortable with it being in there in the way that that system's set up of not being.
So you don't think it'll eventually break the baffle up or something like that? So you know, we, uh.
Large tank.
We sell stuff that causes the stuff to break up.
Like an enzyme?
Maybe get Mike Rowe to come and do an episode here and here. We'll, we'll buy the, we'll buy the chip, we'll even buy a chest waiter.
Point is, Chad. I just can't help but say, I want this out of there. And, uh. The people in that system want to pay for it, because their discharge is charged.
So it's been in there probably, I mean, like I said, the first time we pumped it, I was two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, if I remember right, and I'm shooting from the hip.
Yeah, so thirteen, fourteen years.
But you know, after that, that'd been ten years or more since it had not even been pumped and and it wasn't that year that we found it, it was the following year.
So it's been ten years since you.
So it's, no, I pumped it, we just.
Since you found it.
We just pumped a.
Twenty eighteen?
In about.
Or nineteen was.
Two or three years ago, so we're pretty close to being due to pump. Next year. So we'll kind of see and get a better idea.
All right.
So.
No, good questions though, Christian.
Uh, the next one I have is repair, repair fund for the manholes. So how I'm looking at all this and I'll show you these, these data if we have enough time here in a second, but. I take the manholes and I I go off of what a current cost is. And I multiply that by, or by a three percent cost of living as well on that. So we're looking at each of the manholes being around. Right now, I think they're right around six thousand dollars and I'm coming up with an amount of about thirteen thousand five hundred is what I'm making an assumption that. In seventy-five years, yeah, which is probably low. It's just, I don't know any other good data to really go off.
Sure, you gotta take.
Same thing I do as far as the repair fund with the sewer line, I've gone off that seventy-five year, looking like a linear foot right now. Our most recent one was about sixty dollars, so. Doing the three percent, we're looking at about a hundred and thirty-five dollars linear foot in seventy-five years. And then I also look, because the majority of our sewer line is in the roadway, so an asphalt repair. Yep, I'm looking at about a fifteen-foot wide trench there, uh, you know, and most of them, especially the fairly deep stuff. Um, so in seventy-five years, I went with a four dollars a square foot on that, um. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of it is a guess, but I think it's a fairly good, good guess on it. So electrical, I went off of. Kind of what our electrical bills are now, um, especially at Bailey Acres, they have a larger pump and so the new lift station will probably be about the same as the end. I go off of the phone with Century Lane, uh, pump maintenance, looking at about every year, you you pull those and as you know, Commissioner, you pull them, you do your, you repack them. Uh, make sure your seals and everything are good on them, so look at it about.
There are three, four, five horsepower, you repack them. If they're smaller than that, you just throw them away, put a new bucket.
So these ones, we're looking at about six horsepower.
Oh, yeah, you don't repack.
These are, these are pretty beefy pumps, though, they've, and we've got that extra one up there too, so.
Yeah.
So I think going off of the stuff that that we've normally done, I look at about a five thousand, uh, for that type of a pump maintenance every five years. I wish that we could do it ourselves, but we just don't have the.
We don't do enough of that. Out in Plain City, they have, you know, fifty of those pumps that they're repacking and do on a regular basis. You don't have that.
One every five years is not.
So administration right now, um, and and speaking of, you know, talking about Scott Park and stuff, we're looking at about.
We're, we're looking out there at how to keep him busy in the winter.
Oh, sure.
So we did most of that winter maintenance.
We have plenty to keep Mr. Man.
Right.
So right now, in working, we're averaging about four dollars each month to to do as far as the administration. That's kind of taking care of the billings. Uh, you know, a lot of the other stuff, you know, that Scott Park helps us with and things like that, so we bumped it up to five dollars each month for for this next five years. Because it'll probably be about fifty, fifty on that, so. Um, right now, all these fees, I've kind of gone off of what the total connections are, so here's your total sewer for the western part, which I got a little bit more in depth on this. Looks like we still have five minutes, so I can get a little bit into this. I kind of analyzed it a little bit going off of using a seventy-five-year lifespan. A fifty-year lifespan and a hundred-year lifespan. And I might have, uh, that's pretty close, like with fifty-year lifespan.
Well, when you say total sewer line, what is that? That's just our, our, what you said, the.
Length, so that's the linear feet.
So. Right now, Central Weaver, the reason why we're kind of coming up with this, Central Weaver is coming out, and when I did the fees last in two thousand seventeen, their their fee that they were charging us was twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Now, starting this July first, it'll go up to twenty-seven dollars and five cents. So there's been an increase of about four dollars and fifty-five cents, so right around there.
Got it here on the page previous on each one of.
So, and right here to you.
Pretty good increase.
So so it is going up about five dollars, so we are looking at this a little bit more, and these are not complete um, amounts here, I've still got to go through and fine tune them a little bit.
Talk to Gage a little bit about that, so what this goes down to, Gage, is more and more of the federal government is tightening things down on what they have to take out. Or what they can uh, release back into the the systems.
They got it, they got to change their.
They're doing it, and so, uh, you know, these uh, when you look over our capital uh, expenses over the next five years. It's twenty million one year, twenty-two the next, twenty-three, uh, then we've got five years of that. And uh, so they're very. Oh yeah, a hundred million dollars, very expensive uh, uh, fixes out there to the plant.
They're getting really, really tight on a lot of that stuff.
They are, the EPA is, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I I went and evaluated those, you know, using what I think that we should come up with the maintenance on everything, I just kind of went through with you on these repair funds and everything and. I went through it real quickly, I was hoping to have a little bit further, and I could have made some mistakes in here, but we're looking at about a thirty dollars a month. Uh, if we were to do the seventy-five year, which would put our monthly payment of about fifty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents a month for each of our users out there. And when you look at uh, the fifty year, it goes up to sixty, and then of course you look at a hundred year, it brings it back down to actually forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. There's a little variation uh, pushing it out. Will this stuff last a hundred year? Yeah, I mean, most of our concrete pipe PVC's not been around long enough to know how long it's gonna last. And you know, we might end up having some of it, it's gonna be a little bit earlier, and some of it a little bit later, it's it's really tough.
Well, the issue with the concrete is not the pipe, it's the gaskets.
So we only have concrete manholes, so luckily that's all we're gonna have.
You started to see some deterioration.
And you can't.
So I know you guys are gonna ask, well, what is this fair in in comparison to a lot of the other cities out there, so I tried to look into that real quickly. Um, you know, looking at Ogden City, they're right around, you see what amount they have that goes to Central Weaver, which is sixteen sixty-two, and then their base, which is. Probably more likely their maintenance fees and stuff, that's sixteen dollars, but there, those are going all off of connection, so a three-quarter inch water connection, a one-inch water connection. Give you an idea, at North Ogden, twenty-three dollars and twenty cents, um, you know, West Haven's thirty-three, which West Haven's been thirty-three ever since I started here. And so I don't know, doesn't look like they've really updated their fees in much time. Uh, we've got Hooper at fifty, which they do have that elaborate vacuum system, which is.
You're talking about single family homes here.
This is all, yeah, from what I could find on, and these, I don't know one hundred percent, I mean, a lot of these I actually got off of, some of them Bonavista bills, so I was able to find some information. Um, some of it, I called them up. Now, Plain City Commissioner Jenkins, you might know a little bit more, but I know they've got two different types of systems, those that are connected to the Lagoon system. And then those that go to Central Weaver.
And so they have double billings.
I believe this one is for.
Double, but to different.
So this one's, the way I understand it, this was from the last time I looked at it, two thousand seventeen, I didn't get a chance to get a hold of them, but, and they're looking at about thirty-six dollars and thirty.
Well, the other thing, plain city has, a lot of these other cities don't, Hooper does, and you can see they're real high. They have to pump an extraordinarily large amount of their system. You know what I mean? So, you know, Plain City, when I was there, we had like fourteen lift stations, I'll bet they've got twenty-two or three now.
Just intermediate ones to keep them moving, right?
And then littler ones that they have to bring on to connect.
That's right.
And so lots and lots of pump systems out there, and they're they're chasing pumps all the time.
So I guess the the idea here is to kind of give you guys an idea, I mean, you know, we would be looking, if if I was to suggest a a monthly fee to you right now, I mean, out west, right now, we're billing them forty dollars a month. Um, I would think going off of these numbers and looking at what to expect of that seventy-five year and do good, to doing good planning for down the road, we're looking at probably the fifty dollar a month amount.
So how much we got in the fund?
So that's one thing, I'm still waiting to get that information, but last time, you know what Scott said? I believe we were right around a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand, but that's.
One, one problem will take up considerable northern. You walked past the door. How much we got in our sewer fund?
I don't, I don't wanna venture a guess.
I'm sorry to make you do that. I just made you late for your next meet.
It's all right, it's just a chair. He'll get over it.
So what's gonna happen here, you're you're. Facing this on one side, and which is important, but on the flip side, we need to know what we have to have in that fund for a repair. And you know, if it's a little repairs, can be ten, fifteen, twenty thousand, but if you have to replace two hundred foot line or a septic tank or. Or a part of a drain field, you're a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, just like that. And that's it today, who knows what it'll be in a year or two, the way things are going.
And so hopefully I can dive in a little bit more, I wanted to get this in front of you as much as I can before I get too far into it, to make sure.
But I wanna see where Scott's at here, because uh, we've got to have enough to replace some of this.
So lower valley, we have a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in the fund balance. In the upper valley. So the upper valley is eighty-eight thousand, and then you got Crimson Ridge and Radford Hills, and they're. No, we've got about three thousand.
Systems that we've been building that reserve up.
They are.
So so that's the, that's the point I would make. The western part, we've been building this fund, this balance out for for significantly more longer amount of time than we have to offer.
We gotta do something.
With those systems right there, whether there's one person connected or all twenty-five connections, that's still the same amount to operate, maintain it. So the developer actually put up, I think, twenty thousand into escrow to help continue with that, and that's where we're at now.
Well, and that was the reason why we have so much is because we moved over that money out of the engineering escrows and actually rolled it into their fund balance.
And so that has all been done though. Yeah, so Crimson Ridge and Radford Hills, how much is there?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Which twenty thousand was a developer.
Yeah, that's okay.
But it's been operating for years, and only that's a ten thousand, I mean, would have generated on its own ten thousand dollars. Which is not very much.
Yeah, not very much.
But we have had some repairs, in fact, we have one right now, I think the developer is gonna fix that for us. I mean, essentially, we have the ability of just sending the bill to the H O and having them pay for it, but. Uh, while they were up there and stuff, they, I couldn't get any contractors to really even do it. So they were, said they would try to go get that done for us.
We need to come up with some kind of a figure on what we feel these need to have, and then we need to work towards that figure. And uh, uh, I doubt that's gonna change these fees a lot, but we oughta kind of adjust those according. Yeah, inch that way, exactly, Commissioner Harvey.
And it's tough to know what, let's say we have a major repair, like you're saying, Commissioner Jenkins, it's tough to know. The 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 costs change from year to year, and it seems like they're increasing exponentially right now, we're seeing a huge increase in all.
But I would, when I look at Crimson Ridge or Atford Hills, those are smaller systems. And I would think a hundred thousand would be plenty there. For those. When I look at these others, upper and lower valley, they're bigger. I think lower valley is getting close where they need to be at a hundred and eighty-six, maybe two fifty would be where they need to be. But the upper valley, eighty-eight, probably ought to be a hundred and fifty or somewhere in there. I don't know how many connections that equates to, you could tell us that.
So the upper valley?
So Chad, you've developed your, like, your long-term capital projects plan for this, right?
Yeah, but we're talking stuff that's not. And you have that all the time, at least in Plain City.
And they're tough to troubleshoot.
Nope, thank you. All right, so Chad, you'll just have to uh, sit down and kind of go through this.
Yes, just.
Estimate that.
Give you an idea too, I mean, right now I've added everything up, and and right now, we have the amount of connections is about four hundred and fifty. And it almost changes kind of daily on what the individuals are out. So what I did is everything uh, went off of the four hundred and fifty connections is what they should be built, and and my idea and reasoning there is, is that, okay, well. If they're not really connected, then they're really not using the lines and we're not. Just so you're aware of how I kind of.
So what's your recommendation to us?
So right now, I just wanted to get an idea on this, if I had a recommendation for you right now, I think we'd we'd probably be looking or or seeing if you guys would be comfortable with right around the fifty dollars. A a month fee, which would be going up ten dollars, five of which would be Central Weaver's fee and five.
Fifty or fifty-seven?
Fifty, I think.
Yeah, he's going right there, forty-nine, eighty-four.
But the, the other problem that I have too is, is that. Central Weaver's still increasing theirs by three percent every year, so in another five years, they're gonna be going up another five dollars, so. And the question, do we wanna kind of even that out now, or do we want to wait until that five years?
Every five years is just fine. Well, and then the money that doesn't go to Central Weaver in the upper valley will boost these accounts.
So, yeah, in the in the upper valley, all that money just stays with those.
And so that's fair.
We keep track of everything as far as there's, there's three different accounts that of course Scott has to take care of. The one's the lower valley, one's the upper valley, which takes in a bunch of systems, and then we have another uh, uh, account just for Pineview West, which entails Crimson Ridge and Radford Hills. Just to keep that as its own.
Actually, I'm okay with that.
You run that separate, right?
And that's the one that I'm really.
That additional five dollars, how many is in that for the upper valley? It's that eighty-eight thousand.
I apologize, I wish I would.
You know, a third, two-thirds or something like that.
So I think out west, we have about two hundred and seventy, so we're right around a hundred connections in the upper valley.
For five hundred dollars a month, so six some, six thousand a year to go into that.
So so the upper valley, I haven't analyzed, it'll kind of be different than this, and I'll bring a whole spreadsheet, just. Just because with the sewer, the onsite uh, drain fills, that's all gonna incorporate more costs into it.
Well, I'm okay with this, you seem to have done a good job, all I wanna know is how fast will the upper valley? Fund grow?
Have no problems, I can give you that answer.
But you said they were newer systems, so the chance of.
Yeah, so the upper valley, yeah. I mean, it was ninety-nine, I think, which is still relatively for sewers, new, you know.
So can you show us that fund balance and when you started or where it was and where it is today?
I think I can. I didn't start, when I started here, there was no fees being collected for the upper valley at all, and I think me and Chris already had worked on getting that enacted.
Well, can you show us that? Uh, we'll be able to tur- determine about how that's going and if.
This is how much I'm thinking, right now, with what we are moving forward, what we would have to collect for creating this good repair fund for the. And then the asphalt replacement right there, so you're looking at. Little over a hundred thousand a year that we should be collecting.
Is that toll or is that lower value?
That would be just lower valley.
Yeah, this feels, I'm comfortable with this whole thing, about where you're going, all I wanna do is know how fast that that uh. Fund is growing in the upper valley.
We may need to make adjustments.
Right, and right now, it's gonna be, uh, what you're recommending is fifty dollars across the board.
So this is, that's for the lower valley, the upper valley, until I get it, uh, the upper valley is gonna be different, especially with Crimson and Radford and Pineview West, we're gonna have two different fees. Cause one of them's a mechanical system, and the other one's just an onsite drain fill, so, um, and then we have everything.
So why do you have to charge different?
Just, I guess my my way of thinking, and it's up to you guys when I bring it before you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, you have individuals that are on this system that should be paying for the system that they're on. Or these individuals are just on the regular drain.
I understand that, you know, I just come from a background where it's a city, that's what the whole thing is. You know, and I understand where you're coming from.
With the western part of the county, just keep in mind, we have about seventy-seven connections, I think, that are directly connected to Central Weaver's main line. Um, and so that's how we've kind of done it out there, we didn't wanna sit and break out, hey, you know, you're connected to Central. They pay a one.
So what would the upper valley fee be right now, under your scenario?
So, under my scenario, we're looking at for the Crimson Ridge system, and I haven't got some.
Is this based on fifty or a hundred or seventy-five years?
So everything, I I like to go off of the seventy-five year lifespan, but I like to compare all of them to to get a good idea. Um, but that, the Crimson Ridge system's looking at, my last projection was right around seventy-five dollars a month.
Yeah, that's healthy.
But I'm not.
What about, what about the main upper valley?
The main upper valley, I haven't gotten into it yet right now, but two thousand seventeen, forty dollars was enough, and we're probably gonna go up just a little bit due to. Costs as far as power, uh, phone, and then.
Hold that close to the fifty, just so we can say, well, it's about the same.
That's what, last year, or last time we did it, I was able to get them to, they were both forty, which was great, but.
I like to keep, try to keep fairly consistent.
And this way at fifty, it'll it'll raise that eighty-eight thousand a little faster.
Stuff I know, I believe last I heard, and I I didn't double check on this, but I believe uh, Wolf Creek's right around fifty dollars, and so you look at that system, which is.
So you're looking right now, uh, you're looking to bring this in. Next Tuesday?
No, not that, just, the only thing I'm bringing for you on on next Tuesday is just gonna be the municipal service, and this this fee I wanted to get in front of you to get your ideas before I get too far into make sure.
Well, I kinda like the idea of holding that both at fifty. And uh, the upper valley will uh, build up that eighty-eight thousand a little faster, and in uh, five years, when we're up, you can redo it again. And then you've adjusted up or down or wherever you feel.
Yeah, next Tuesday will just be kind of that. Statement snapshot of what happened in twenty.
All right, so. Any, anything else? All right, so did we have anything individually you wanted to bring up either of you today?
I think I've got, I've got somebody looking, the Trails Foundation Northern, had a letter for us to sign on. We, I I think we've given them some money, but I'm just having Stacy check with Scott Park. On that, just to make sure.
We talked to him about that piece property out there in Marys Slaterville, we did, and he said he'd be glad to take it.
And then also, you've got some information with regards to water, you talked to Lindsay, uh, cause we were gonna put the uh, some information.
So I do have some information there, but you know, she's almost.
She didn't wanna make it without any.
I know, but what ends up happening is this is so large, it's so complex, what's happening, and so many different agencies are involved. So in Weaver County, uh, Weaver Basin only, well, Weaver Basin controls about fifty percent of the water on the Weaver drainage. But when you come down from there, you start going to uh, the Plain City Irrigation Company. Well, they're connected to water at Echo, and Weaver Basin doesn't have anything to do with that, other than we open the gate and shut the gate the way they tell us to. But they're the ones that determine how much water they're gonna get, and then you, from there, you go to the Pineview Water System. Now, I'm not talking about Pineview Dam, I'm talking about the this Pineview Water System that Plain City's secondary systems on. Well, they control that all themselves, based on the water shares they own, and where they get those water shell shares from. Well, then you go to Hooper Taylor, you go to uh, uh, all the other water districts, and all the water districts in the upper valley. And all those water districts. Determine how they're gonna wield water and where it comes from. Now, the other day, I I drive out by the country club, and they got their sprinkling system on, that was a week ago. First, like, how can they do that? Well, it's based on the water they get, and where they get it from and how early they get it. Some of these guys have shares that are earlier than other people, and so they can do what they want.
Country Club has a good water right with, I think it's Bonavista, isn't it?
No, I think it's with the Ogden City.
Is it with Ogden City?
But I go out to BDO last week, and they had water on out there, on irrigating lawn, a BDO.
How's the line even charged?
Well, that that's Ogden City, and they have the right to do it. Ogden City has some of the earliest uh, uh, rights on Pineview Dam. And uh, you know, they slice that dam up, and Ogden City's water's right at the bottom.
Yeah, so they get to take their water.
They get to take it, they get to take a certain amount. So we've announced what we, Weaver Basin has announced what their. Cutback is gonna be, and most of the other. Cutback is gonna be, and most of the other districts have agreed to go somewhere very close to that.
What's their cutback?
Uh, well, I've got it, I, I, it's a fair amount. It's, uh, forty percent. On, uh, secondary water, it's, uh, thirty percent on, uh, uh, area, on the ag water. And, uh, so you know, as you look at that, those are fairly substantial. We estimate we're gonna have a little better water year than last year, but just by a smidge is all. And, uh, the biggest. And the biggest problem we have on the whole system is Pine View Dam. Pine View Dam, that little area right there, well, it's the drainage that comes off Monte Cristo. Is just the lowest. It was the worst of the worst and it's the worst of the worst this year. Yeah, when you start looking at the snowtail reports off of Ben Loeman Peak and Monte Cristo and all through there. We're at, uh, fifty-five, fifty percent, we're about half what we should get. So yeah, Pine View's terrible. Now, Plain City, our irrigation company, we have, we have early, early rights. Off of the, uh, drainages that come, that we, we gave to get into Echo. Dam, and so we've got some very good rights and Echo Dam is in fairly good shape. And, uh, so they're probably gonna be okay with an eight-day rotation.
So Echo's better, huh?
Well, it is, but, but. Weaver Basin is storing some water in there right now. So the water that's in Echo today really belongs to Weaver Basin. And they're storing it there to save it, to move down river. And they can do that kind of stuff. That's why this gets so complicated. It's like, well, how can you tell?
What, my, my question is, is, I'm, I, I, I thought it would be responsible of us. In a magazine of such a, you know, such a thing, to give some, uh. Information, some substance, some substance to the people out west on what to do with water, but we should probably do another story.
Well, I can give you our general cutbacks and it'll be a, it'll be a lukewarm, nice, still good story.
I think that's what you ought to give.
I can give that to Lindsay.
If you're, if you're on the Weaver Basin, these are what these are, and then we put it in an article and call it good.
It won't be anything more than that, because it get, it just gets too damn complicated.
Well, for the most people out there, I mean, farmers, your Tom Faveros and some of the others, they'll understand. That's not who we're appealing to.
In nineteen sixteen, the Bureau of Reclamation got together out here. And they allowed the Provo River, uh, people to buy. A hundred and thirty-three thousand acre feet of water off the Weaver River.
I heard that.
Right. Uh, off the Weaver. Well, all these years, it's not been an issue. And that river eventually goes down, it goes into Utah Lake and keeps it the way it is and anyway. Well, what's happened now is we need the water. So we bought that water back or the use of that water for the next six years. Uh, we bought sixty-five thousand acre feet, so half of it. And, uh, they're allowing us to keep that for the next six years and we're happy with it, glad to get it. That cost us six and a half million dollars to buy that sixty-five acre feet. So that's, uh, that's two Willard Bay's. That costs us six and a half million dollars. It's a thousand dollars an acre foot. That's high-priced water. That's triple what we're paying anywhere else. So it is high, high-priced water. So those people. In, uh, on the Provo River Drainage and Utah Lake and Provo and all those people. They're smiling right now, cause they're making a whole lot of money off Weaver County. Well, and our people. Morgan County too, Morgan County's taking a hit in it.
Weaver Basin.
It's the Weaver Drainage. So yeah, but we're, I'm telling you though, we're glad to get that water, cause we need it in the worst way. The way it's looking right now, uh, the water in Willard Bay will be so low this year. We anticipate you'll be able to see the bottom of the bay in several spots. Yeah, they said it's gonna look like we'll be sucking mud in some of those areas out there, it's so low. In fact, we've, they're gonna do a new outlet on the. Southwest corner of that. There's one there now that goes out to, uh, G S L. We're gonna abandon that and go to another one out there, and the reason we're doing it this year is because water's so low that, uh, they're just gonna build it.
I'll tell you what, all that, all that property out there on the south side of Willard Bay. Not the, not the southeast side, the true south side, all where it kind of wraps around. And goes out towards Plain City. I'd like to see that whole thing. And the size of Willard Bay increased, cause that's always been low water out there forever. I mean, there's some people going out there and burning tires, I've understood years and years ago.
A lot of areas to do out there.
Yeah, but, but if we could get rid of that, it'd save us a hundred thousand dollars a year. I know it's not a lot of money, in mosquito abatement fees. But you'd have, that's, when you get into those water reclamation things. To, to redo Willard Bay again, to add all those acre feet out there and make that.
Well, they brought it up a few years ago, what, two feet?
Three feet.
Three feet, yeah.
Well, the only way you could do that right now is if you could get the Bear River to go to it. And the Bear River, they can't get to it. I insisted, they did a study specifically based on my request. And they said they can't find a way to get the Bear River to flow. Uh, a, a channel off of, to flow into there. I told my sister, hell sakes, it flows. Right into the Bear, Bear River Bird Refuge and it's only a mile or two away, well, maybe five. I said, you telling me? And they says, yeah, we just can't get high enough on that.
Well, can't you pump it?
Uh, they can, but you know, the, well.
At a million dollars, a, a ten thousand acre feet of water.
At a thousand, uh, dollars, uh. Yeah, that's, that's.
All the water they got back east, we may start having to pump from east to west.
Well, anyway, so I can get. I can get Lindsay some of that information, but it's, uh.
She needs it right away.
Is that what she's been calling about?
Yeah.
Cause we're gonna be meeting with them tomorrow.
All right, I'll get it during. I kind of forgot about that. She called me Friday. I told her I'd get it during, I kind of forgot about that today. Oh, in fact, you know, I got a meeting right now, I gotta be in, oh geez.
What time's, uh?
Uh, four thirty.
Waco, four thirty. Commissioner Jenkins, did you have any questions on that spreadsheet I sent you on Friday?